It is seven o'clock. I would like to thank everyone and say good evening and welcome everyone to the Monroe Township Public Board of Education meeting this Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021, the first day of autumn. Okay? I acknowledge, I'd like to just say a few words before we get started. I acknowledge that this is the start of the new school year and there remains a great deal of uncertainty with high levels of anxiety and concerns. Like to acknowledge that for all concern. Both sides of our issues, we have almost split down the middle. Both sides' concerns are valid and entitled to our opinions and what we have to say. I would love to, and I know everybody's very concerned with the quality of our democracy, and I would love to conduct this meeting in the best and most fair democratic way. We all want everyone's message to be heard and expressed, and the members of the Board of Education would like not to be put in a position to postpone the business of this, of the schools, of this meeting, or the instruction of our students. So acknowledging everyone's feelings, everyone will be heard. You will have four minutes. We have the new policy in order now where everyone would get uninterrupted four minutes, and then we would ask you to sit down. I would also ask that no one leave the podium because we want to collect every word that you're going to say, and we need you in front of the mic. And we would like to be, have this meeting conducted in a civil and respectful manner. We would like to be good stewards of our democracy and respect everyone's position. Even if we disagree, let them be heard. I would also like to say that every effort and example we set is for the benefit of our children and our future. The governor got our letters and as well as letters from across the state, and the, you know, the speak, what everyone's speaking about and what everyone's talking about, we have sent and we have done our part. However, we are not the ones who made the rules, and we are not in a position as a board to ignore them. So I ask that we all join as a good community, express our views, and we try to get through this trying time together. Okay? I thank you very much, and we'll begin our meeting. We will call to order, please, Mr. Gorsky.
Actually, before we start, in the spirit of everything you just said, and I don't want to call out Peter, but the state and the governor's rule is if you're in school, you wear a mask. If not-
Unless there's a medical exemption.
So there's a medical exception, and he's six feet away, or whatever the rule is. I mean, listen, you do you, but the rule is the rule. And we expect kids to follow the rules, and I would expect more-
And we have a written medical exception.
Okay. I wanted that for the public to know-
The public should know that-
Why he's not wearing a mask, because otherwise it stirs up questions. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gorsky?
Madam President, the agenda item next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm sorry.
Would you like to ask the student board members to leave us, Matt?
Oh, I called to order already. Jeez. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Ready for a roll call?
Again, I am honored to be in this country and have been able to pledge allegiance to this wonderful flag. Let us respect ourselves, become one as much as we can, even with our differences, and adhere to the wonderful privilege it is to live in a democracy. Thank you. I'm sorry to be emotional, but like I said, emotions are running high. Mr. Gorsky, please.
Ms. Belko.
Here.
Ms. Bierman.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella participating remotely.
I'm here. Thank you.
And Mr. Chiarella, may I say that you are quarantined?
Yes.
So that is why you have the medical exception, and for the sake of the community, you have, you stayed home. You are, you do not, well, we don't know yet, but you are quarantined based on your work issues, right?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Gorsky?
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Here.
Mr. Polari.
I'm here.
Mr. Rotsky.
Here.
Ms. Segal.
Here.
Ms. Skirby.
Here.
Mr. Tofano.
Yeah.
Ms. Arminia.
I am here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening.
Thank you very much.
And in accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted September 17th, 2021, at all schools on the district website at HTTPS-colon-backslash-WWDOTMonroe.K12.NJ.us, the Home News Tribune, the Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you.
Madam?
Yes. The next item of business is approval of the minutes. We have draft minutes ready for approval or vote. The Public Board of Education meeting on June 16th, 2021, do I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Ms. Skirby, who's second it?
You can have it.
Mr. Tofano? Okay, speak up tonight, guys. Any additions, corrections, retractions?
Clarification.
Yes?
Are we talking eighteen or six sixteen?
I'm sorry, did I say June 16th?
No, I don't know which one we're starting with, that's all.
I'm going by the agenda.
You said June 16th.
I did say June 16th.
Those are the minutes that have been tabled the last two meetings.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
I'm going from the top.
No, from the top. You're going from the bottom. Oh, yeah.
I think I have the newer, the newer agenda.
Okay, well, this is why I was confused.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, so just so the public knows, we get the agendas on Friday, but they are subject to change until today, so I just picked up the most recent agenda. So my colleagues, if they ask questions, it's just because the agenda changes so often. I'm sorry. So the Board, the Public Board of Education meeting, June 16th, 2021, please. And we've got a motion, a second. Any questions?
Now we have room for comments?
Yes, please.
Okay, so question slash comment. So I was curious why this was tabled for a month and then two months, and so I got the attachment. I opened it up today, and I see it only changes in red, and it's pretty lengthy. So I have a couple of questions as to, and we've had this debate for years that I've sat here with you side by side about the structure of minutes, the version of summary, meaning to be, give everybody an idea what was said, what was covered. If you want to know the specifics, you go back to the videotape and you watch it in its entirety. But it seems like, and again, forgive me, but everything is the same, everything is a summary, and then there's one member of the public where it's basically a transcript of every word he said. So my argument is this: A, I don't find that acceptable per the way we always do minutes; B, you know, again, we've talked about this before, I'm not a fan of putting politics into the school board. Politics are across Perrineville Road. This is for the students of Monroe, this is the school board. So in here, in the verbatim transcript, is a lot of politics. Again, I don't know why it's in here, but that's my objection. And I'd also say the word transparency was used by this gentleman many times, obviously a big fan of transparency. You've often talked about being a fan of transparency for years. So let's talk about transparency. Why is this added in verbatim, nobody else's, and whose idea was that? Because I know I didn't have a say in that.
Okay. I will answer that question. We have gone back and forth for months now since July on these minutes, and we have asked for different corrections, different, and at just, at one point, I just felt the only way to get this settled was to put verbatim minutes. Some of the board members, and I have always been a fan of verbatim minutes across the board.
And respectfully, you have, and I haven't.
I would love to see that. It was really to end the controversy or the difference between what was a correction and what was an edit, an editing version.
So you're sort of choosing to break the rules to acquiesce a few board members and their, and their pet peeve, as opposed to holding true to what is this Board of Ed and everything we've worked so hard for, and what is in policy on how you're supposed to do the minutes. This is not what's in policy. We don't talk about in policy about putting anything as a transcript verbatim. That's not what the minutes are for, and I firmly object to this, for whatever that's worth. I will be voting no.
That's fine.
And I wanted my voice heard, so thank you.
And I appreciate that, and I don't disagree with you entirely. However, if we can't come to terms with minutes, then the reality is, this is what was said, a verbatim construction is what was said. I, again, think that if, if we can get a comprehensive, there's a, there's a very subtle line between comprehensive minutes and what actually happened. My position, just personally, but this, there's the whole board, and the board will be voting on it, but if someone goes to these minutes in a year from now, and I have had objections over the eight years that I've been here, that the minutes are not necessarily comprehensible. If someone wants to go back two years for minutes that we had, a lot of times, they won't understand the content or the context of the conversation, and I have often voted no on minutes. So this was an attempt to just get the argument settled because this is what was actually said.
But only for this one person, only for this one member of the public?
Okay.
And again, I'll make, my final argument is that, again, it spews politics, and everybody has the right to say what they want and have their opinion, but we should squash that here on the Board of Ed because we are not a political board, we are a board for the school.
See, that's, that's the issue, and I'll be with you.
And that's another debate we've had for years.
Yeah, I mean, I don't believe in squashing anything or censoring anything, and sometimes when the minutes come out, they are editorialized, which is also an objection that I've had in the past. So the only thing I could see to be real is that this is what was actually said. Ms. Belko.
Policy 0168, recording board meetings. Date created, June 2003, date edited, February 2019. Scroll down to the section, "The Board Secretary shall make an audiotape recording, a videotape recording of each board meeting as an administrative aide in the preparation. The recordings shall be retained for 60 days, must be at least 45 days, or until either summary or verbatim transcripts have been approved as minutes. Whichever is longer, after which time they may be erased, only if permission is granted by the New Jersey Department of State, Division of Archives and Records Management." So our policy does state that verbatim, verbatim minutes are permitted, and we can use them.
Madam President?
I'd like to hear from board members, please. Mr. Polari?
Madam President, I started the meeting very auspiciously, and I saw your emotion, I share the same with you. I heard both sides, it may be in the policy to transcript what was said verbatim, which we haven't been doing. What I find really amazing is that there are actually four speakers that spoke in that particular session, and prior to that, a half a dozen people spoke as well. If I may read this, "For everything else, enquired about the next steps of the BGNT committee meeting. Next speaker spoke in support of the business administrator. Next speaker spoke about the anticipated meeting with the legislators. Whereas for this one person, there is a three-fourth page of verbatim with references to Democratic Party, incorrectly I might add, because I think that gentleman was referring to me as the Democratic organizational chair, which I'm not. This is purely done to discredit people, to showcase their presence at the Board of Education, and to propagate unnecessary information that's really not needed in the Board of Education. I completely agree with my colleague Paul Rotsky that this is nothing more than politics. We should not be encouraging this type of transcripts going. Lot of people come here, lot of people speak, speak their mind, sometimes they attack personally. We sit here and listen, but this is the first time in the last three years, and even before that, ever since I've been coming to the Board of Ed meetings, I have seen somebody fighting to have this in there. I don't know which board member really pushed for this. If it is going to be transcribed, transcript for everybody and everything.
I would-
Don't pick and choose one because there's a Democratic Party or a political party has been identified here. This is absolutely wrong, and I want people to know that this is the type of politics this town, and sometimes this board is beginning to play. Thank you.
Mr. Polari, if you would have asked for the verbatim of all of them, I would certainly be in agreement with that as well.
Madam Chair, Madam President, we had several discussions. There is a common guidelines for meeting minutes and transcripts. In planning board where I serve, there are meeting minutes written, and there's a transcript of a specific application done. They're completely two different things. Meeting minutes are just the meeting minutes. Transcripts are just that. You have a code transcriber sitting there and typing away every single word that's said. That is not what meeting minutes are, in my honest opinion. This is not in the corporate America, this is not in nonprofit organizations, this is not in any organization, that the meeting minutes reflect verbatim of transcript of what people speak. I mean, clearly, let's, let's put, let's be realistic, like you said, right? This is clearly somebody asking you to put this in so that they could propagate and campaign against someone else.
Well, I will take responsibility here. It was going back and forth so much, and I kept getting information as to, you know, nothing was satisfying either party, either the administration or the party concerned with it. However, it was my decision, I thought it was in the best interest, to just put exactly what was said. Again, if you, if we want verbatim minutes from now on, that, that's fine with me, because what is said, and not necessarily in this particular instance, but what is said by board members and things by the administration, and often sometimes by the public, should, we should be able to go back to that and see how things are being governed, and see what's being said, and see how, if people have sort of fulfilled their, the words that they said a year or so before. I mean, so I'm an advocate for total verbatim minutes. No one had, no one objected to the others. So I, at this point, I take your point, I take Mr. Rotsky's point, I don't entirely disagree. Can we call the vote on this?
Madam President, may I, may I suggest something? At this point of time, this will go down in a vote of seven to three, just like the way things are going for the last nine months.
Can we call the vote on this?
I rest my case.
Yes, we will.
But we're discussing, I mean, this is a valid concern.
I think we're going to be here till tomorrow.
No, Mr. Gorsky, you have an interesting-
Right.
So I think that-
We will definitely be here tomorrow.
Unless it's illegal, which it is not, I think we should just move on. We're going to call the vote.
May I respectfully ask if the attorney feels I'm conflicted from doing my job and keeping the minutes?
He may answer.
The question is, are you conflicted from doing your job and keeping the minutes? I, I don't think, that question is the question on the floor. You prepared minutes, one or more board members asked that they be amended, the revised version of the minutes is going to be voted on. I don't think it puts you in a conflict position at all.
Madam, may I speak?
On what subjects?
We have a call to vote, please.
On general, general conditions of minute keeping, which I think the public-
No, I think we've had, we've had that discussion.
Respectfully, you've used words like edited, and I heard that was censored.
Point of order.
The point of order, Mr.-
I'm speaking to the, to the chair.
No, and there's a point of order in-
You have a mean going on here.
Seven to three, let's move on.
Just call the roll, please. We have, we have something on, and I understand. Please call a roll, sir.
I'm being censored.
We have two more things to vote on, so.
Yes, for this, for this particular one.
For the, for the minutes, there is no roll call, it's all in favor type motion.
All right. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Absolutely not.
Okay. One, two, three. And objections?
Please, I didn't, I didn't get that, you have to hold your hands up.
Okay, please hold your hand up, all in favor. We have five.
Five, five votes.
And Ken's on the phone if you want to answer.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Okay, so six. All, any objections? We have three, and I'm going to abstain, since I made that decision. Okay, the next one is Public Board of Education meeting, August 18th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Who did, who was that?
Motion.
Karen? And second, Mr. Tofano. Any corrections, objections, additions, subtractions?
Looks like a nice summary. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, please? We have-
Aye.
Seven, eight, nine, okay. And I'm going to withstand again, under the circumstances. So that's passed. Next one is the closed session minutes, closed session meeting, August 18th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Katie and Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have six. Any objections? Seven?
I have to abstain, I wasn't there.
You're abstaining? Okay, and I'll abstain as well.
Well, you know what? I think I need to abstain. I'm sorry, I did not intend the meeting.
Three. Oh, that's right, you weren't there for that one.
Sorry, yep, I abstained.
Okay. So we have three abstentions, and the rest are in favor, correct? Okay, I believe the motion passes. Now we have our student board members. So we have someone, well, please first introduce yourselves to all of us, and we'll have you speak.
Hello, everyone here? My name is Shivankla Dipali. I'm currently a junior attending the high school.
Okay. Do you want to give us your report?
Yep.
Okay, go right ahead.
You can pull the mic closer to you.
All right, sounds good. At Oak Tree Elementary School, the school opening has gone very smoothly so far. We have a new arrival and dismissal procedure for parents who choose to drag their children, and it is going very well. Our cafeteria tables are decorated with bright colored fold dots that show children where to sit so they can be safe. Our media center has beautiful new floating shelves constructed by high school students and Eagle Scout Alekia Upa Grundy. Our back-to-school night will be September 30th, and parents will have the opportunity to attend both in-person and virtually. On September 17th, a virtual expectations assembly took place in each classroom, so students can understand why we have expectations in our building and how they make our learning community a safe and wonderful place to learn and grow. Things at Mill Lake Elementary School as well are going very well. Our students have done a really wonderful job transitioning back into the building. Some items of note, through our SLO team at Mill Lake, we were able to offer a presentation and training offered to the entire faculty on different ways we can support our students' journey back into the school building. Students are enjoying their time back on the playground and having recess this school year. On Friday, September 10th, 2021, we as a building did the pledge of allegiance outside as a school community and sang the national anthem as a testament of unity and to honor the lives lost on 9/11. We are off to a great start at Brookside Elementary School, welcoming all of our students back in person. Students are happy to be back in classrooms with their teachers, and they're enjoying having lunch and recess again. All our students have been great helpers to us in following our health and safety protocols. Our teachers and staff are working very hard with our students, and they're also doing a great job with their safety protocols in the classrooms. Barclay Brook School also has a wonderful start to 2021-2022 school year. We're so happy to have all of the students back in for in-person instruction. We are grateful for our students and families for their diligence in following all health and safety protocols. Students thoroughly enjoy having lunch in the cafeteria, and of course, they love playing outside for recess. We are grateful for all teachers, staffs, and families who have assisted in making the transition back to a full school day successful. We're so proud of our Barclay Brook School community.
Okay, would you like, in your own words, just to say a few things about your own experience going back to school, and some instructional, and how you've been able to abridge from going, saying home and remote to now, just in your own words, if you'd like?
Yeah, of course, of course. Personally, for me, I went freshman year, and then of course, March 2020, as we all know, the pandemic hit. So for me personally, the experience of going back to school, it left me in mixed emotions. I mean, of course, I was grateful to see all my friends, I was a little nervous because I've been online and so comfortable online for a solid like year and a half, but honestly, Monroe Township High School, and assuming from this presentation, all these elementary schools have done a really great job in transitioning, putting really good safety protocols and measures, having us all keep our masks on, putting it over our nose, not being involved in that many group activities. Of course, there's a different experience compared to my normal prior years in school, but I mean, we have to do whatever we can to be safe, and based on the COVID count and how the school's progressing right now, I think it's been really great.
Well, thank you very much, and I'd like to encourage you on every meeting to give us, you know, your report, but also let us know the temperature of the students you represent and, and your own feelings. And thank you for sharing your personal information. Go ahead, Jane.
Hi, it's really good to see you guys since last school year.
Samara, give us your name again.
My name is Samara Jane. I was here last June as a junior, and this year I'm a senior at the high school. So at Apple Garth this month, staff and students were extremely excited to get back into the building, and so far, things have been going extremely well. Some events coming up at Apple Garth is the Heavenly Hats fundraiser for cancer survivors, the Week of Respect from October 4th to October 9th, the 9/11 recognition events, Book Fair Week of October 4th as well. And the Unified Program is also having a sale to raise funds for their program. At Woodland, Jamie Newcomb, their guidance counselor, started lunch bunches during recess with their new students and all of the new fourth graders in effort to meet our, their new students and continue their SEL initiative. The PTO at Woodland sponsored an ice cream social at Thompson Park, which is great for getting the community together. And their back-to-school night is on September 28th. At the middle school, back-to-school nights are Monday and Wednesday this week, which have been going well, and they're virtual. The middle school lunches have been shortened to 20 minutes, so the kids have less time to eat, you know, but they are spread out, which is awesome, and it's being definitely COVID-friendly. There is a problem with the timings of it, so a lot of the teams, the teams are separate, and they're always called in the same order, so some teams get a little bit less time to go get their lunch and then come sit down and eat. So maybe if we can create some kind of rotation for that, or, you know, change the timings of how many people are in the pack and how many people are in the cafeteria, something to help those kids and the times that they spend.
They actually have changed that since then. It's been, it went back to the full lunch period.
Okay, awesome. The gym has also been incredibly hot for students to exercise in and keep their masks on, which is a little dangerous. But other than that, I mean, I know for a fact that all of the middle schoolers, or most of the middle schoolers, I can't say all, are really happy to be back and in person, and, you know, with your friends, it's just a total different environment when you're back there and learning, especially for the middle schoolers. At the high school, some awesome news, the Unified Program was chosen to represent New Jersey in the Special Olympics in Florida, which is absolutely amazing. The girls tennis team made it to the finals of GMCs, which is where I was before this. The doubles team, the first doubles team, won second place, which has never happened before. Many of the clubs are hosting meetings, as well as the honor societies, all of which are in person and getting, again, people together, which is fantastic. Back-to-school night is this week and is again virtual. There's been a bit of a busting issue for sports in high school, but I mean, obviously you guys can't do anything about that, it's, it's people who are applying to the jobs. I'm definitely grateful for the mask mandate because the cafeteria is pretty crowded, even with the extra lunch, you know, there's just a lot of people at school, but I'm very glad that the mask mandate is there to keep us safe, especially in hallways and stairwells.
And would you like to add anything personal or any of your own observations?
Personally, I am very happy to be back. I am so happy, my grades are so much better. Just connecting with people is so much easier. I didn't have that connection with my teachers last year as much as I tried. You can go to the office hours, but it's not the same as, you know, looking at them in person and the body language and all of that stuff, just to kind of have that connection with them, enough to be comfortable and ask questions and participate in class. There's a lot more participation, I think, this year.
That's wonderful. And again, I thank you for your, what you said in your report and everything, and I think I would like to let the public know and our staff know that I would like to have our students more engaged as they are, and, and bring things that are maybe troublesome to them, or things that they'd like to see corrected or at least addressed to the board and to the public. I think that's, that's a good start for the year, and we would like to always try to help, you know, not everything can be worked out in, to everyone's satisfaction, but we You know, not everything can be worked out to everyone's satisfaction, but we should know about it and we should have a dialogue about it. So I thank you very much for your report. Okay?
Madam President.
Yes, please.
After thirty-five years in the professional world, I still get very nervous to speak in public. The way both of you conducted yourself today speaks volumes about your confidence. Keep it up and keep it, every public speaking opportunity you get. And the summary that I take away from what both of you said is that our staff and our administration in this school district has done a fantastic job of opening the schools back, so I want to thank each and every one of them for that. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay. We have committee reports. Who would like to begin, please? I'd just like to let the public know I was out last week. I was out of town for the week, so I did not, I was not able to attend any of the meetings, so I will be quiet. Yes, Ms. Belko.
I have the curriculum committee report.
Please.
So first, we had Ms. Susan Gasko present the pre-calculus and pre-calculus honors classes. Both classes present an emphasis on collaboration, the use of technology such as Desmos, graphic calculators, and Khan Academy. They also ensured that remote instruction and remote curriculum is embedded to aid new teachers who are in remote learning should that have to happen in the future. She talked about the various learning styles and that this is a college prep series for both the pre-calculus and the pre-calculus honors. The curriculum is fairly similar for each, a lot more intensive for the pre-calculus honors class, and this is based off of, you know, the need for calculus and the students who are advanced on an advanced level. The second report we had was from Mr. Zach Maralda, talked about the Omni-Channel Marketing Class. It's a business education class and talks about advanced principles in marketing education. Formally, this used to be two half-year courses, sports and entertainment and internet marketing, and they recommend that students take this class in the sophomore year. This class also is going to incorporate digital business simulations from two different platforms. One is Knowledge Matters, which helps them do simulations on business decisions, particularly to improve sports and sports entertainment. And then there is Stu Kent, Social Media Marketing in a Simulated Situation, so that they can get a better idea of what the class is. The next presentation was Dr. Kelly Rozell, made a presentation about A.T., A.P., Language and Composition. The syllabus comes from the College Board, and this is engaging students to be increased skilled readers of prose in a variety of periods and disciplines. There's a lot of research writing and technical analysis with this. This is the third year of a four-year state-regulated mandate for English Language Arts. There are nine separate units in this class, Education, Language, Community, Environment, Identity, Ethics, Pop Culture, Economy, and Activism. There's a lot of heavy writing and a lot of heavy discussion in this class. The next presentation we received was from Dr. Danielle Drust, and it had to do with social studies classes. And we had a presentation on sociology, A.P. U.S. History I and II, and A.P. European History. And A.P., the A.P. courses, the curriculum is dictated by the College Boards. And history, U.S. History I covers the period from fourteen ninety-one to eighteen ninety-eight. There's a lot of discussion and a lot of, the students engage in a lot of things about how did that culture, you know, how would things work now and bringing everything together to where we are in our current state. The eleventh grade A.P. U.S. History II covers the years from eighteen seventy-seven and eighteen ninety-six, which is known as the Gilded Age, and if you'll indulge me for one second just to get the right paper out here. It requires a lot of thoughtful, critical thinking and information and a lot of writing for a lot of these classes for that piece. Then we also were presented with A.P. European History, talked about the significant developments in European history from the year fourteen fifty and forward. It talks about the cultural, economic, political, and social developments that shaped the current world which we live in. There was a lot of healthy discussion after this presentation with the board members. Mr. Polari asked a very poignant question about studying other histories outside of the European area, such as Asia, India, and other countries and cultures outside of Europe. The supervisors reported that they can teach those classes and such as those if there is student interest or if there's an interest in the community in those classes being taught. And they talked about possibly doing something called a, like they do a club rush, something called like an electives rush, so that the students can see if there's an interest in a class that maybe there isn't there. So we, it was some good discussion, and I recommend everyone go and spend a few minutes to watch the videotaped recording of the curriculum meeting so that you can see all the discussion that was had. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Belko.
Can I add something to the curriculum?
Ms. Kirby?
Yes, like Katie said, we did have a very healthy discussion. It was wonderful to discuss about possibilities. And something that I thought about after the meeting, you know, we tend to, in our district, offer classes here, obviously in our district, but there is a whole host of opportunity for our students to take courses at county colleges. So I'd like to maybe ask Katie if she would entertain putting something on the curriculum committee agenda maybe for next month that we can talk about really getting our district involved. Mr. Polari, I know you're on the board at Middlesex County College, and it's really important because when you talk to students and parents from other districts, students are graduating high school in other districts, and they're almost done with an associate's degree. And when you think about an A.P. class here in the district, you have to take the A.P. class, you have to pass the class, then you have to pay a fee to take the A.P. exam, and if you don't score a certain amount on that A.P. exam, colleges won't accept that credit. However, if you have credits from another college, that generally always transfers to another university. So there is a benefit of students taking college courses even over some A.P. courses. And I think we really need to do our due diligence of how we can get that opportunity out to our students because I don't think a lot of students or parents really understand that that's an opportunity for them when they're scheduling classes. So I think if we can maybe discuss that in curriculum and really try to get something together where we can offer more help for students to do that, that would be wonderful.
Can I make a comment?
May Mr. Polari say?
Very quickly, I completely agree with the report our chair gave, and I agree with Ms. Kirby as well. There are, the only problem that we have in Monroe is that we're located so far south in the county that the county college is quite a bit of a hike, at least a half an hour. But having said that, there are a lot of school board, school districts that have taken advantage of Middlesex College right now, and I'll be more than happy to, you know, facilitate any kind of a discussion that's needed because we discussed this in the board meetings at the college on a regular basis on how we can get into the community. So I'll be more than happy to facilitate that. And people are finishing up their college degrees in two and a half years, three years, just by taking these courses. So there's no reason why we can't do that.
Yeah, and I think they do offer a lot online, which could be helpful.
Dr. Lehman, please.
Sure. I'd be more than happy to work with Ms. Belko at an agenda item. It's something we've been working on actually since the summer. It's one of our strategic goals, strategic plan goals, is to expand partnerships and offerings outside of the traditional school day potentially. So I have a connection with their high school liaison. We spent some time going back and forth, clarifying some deadlines, and we actually renew every year. We have a couple of courses that we already do, the dual enrollment, dual credit piece. So we're looking to expand both the dual credit piece, but also look at what kind of courses, because of COVID, they're coming out of COVID. Like you said, they have a lot of online, live online, asynchronous, synchronous, as well as onsite courses. And they will offer, and I said, we have students that say a senior early out. What if they want to take a course? How can we connect your program of studies to what their interests are? So she said, I said, do we just work with them, get them online, your course catalogs online? She said, for a high school student, they recommend personal consultations with their staff. So she's sending me the information, and that's something we'll prepare the counselors for moving into scheduling this January with the hope of students really having access because now driving to Middlesex may not be the barrier that it used to be because of their array of offerings. And they also, if we hit a threshold, last year it was twenty students, I'm expecting it to be the same. We can actually offer a course, they'll send an instructor onsite after hours, and we can host the Middlesex course onsite. And we would target that to different, a different potential group, you know, maybe an avid class. We could offer it to that or something like that, and they could engage in it. But we are engaged in that process right now as a supervisory group, and we can certainly update the community with that.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Dr. Lehman, the only thing that I want to add is that instead of, I'm sorry.
We've had other people with their handle. Let me finish, let me. Ms. Belko, you can take the lead on this with your committee, I would imagine.
Yes, I have it.
And I'd like Ms. Jane to speak. Go ahead.
I just had one idea of like if you guys wanted to add more like community college things where you could get the credit from the community college. Like I'm taking this class right now, honors business, organization, and management, where if I keep my grade above a certain average, which I believe is a seventy or seventy-five, I could actually get the credit from the community college. It's not A.P. credit where it might not transfer to a college or I need to take a test. But I do get it directly from the community college, so if we could have more courses that allow you to do that, you don't need to go all the way, but it's in school, it's in your schedule, and I get the credit and I'm taking the class, so.
Why don't you email Ms. Belko a little bit about what you're doing and who your teacher is, and she'll take a look at that and move it through the committee. Mr. Polari, you got it? You're good. Okay. Thank you. Let's see. Great information. Okay, moving on. Anyone else for Ms. Belko's committee report? Next, please. Mr. Nikotinsky.
In the personnel committee, we discussed the coaching stipends, which is on the agenda for tonight, the vacancy report, the exit survey, the job description for Director of Falcon Care and DCE, and we discussed the interim superintendent position, which we will have interviews tonight in closed session.
Any questions for Mr. Nikotinsky?
So.
Mr. Rutzke?
With regards to the coaches, which it was really interesting to see how their times have sort of spread out so much more before, earlier, later, and the size of the teams that they're handling. I guess I was, I'm a little confused as to, and again, I can't find it, tier one, tier two, tier three, or A.B.C., however it is. Obviously, there's certain criteria that you guys were looking at, which allowed somebody, some sport, I guess, to move up a tier or down a tier, whatever, but I think it's great to reward these coaches for all their hard work and the success stories that we've had for sure at the school. I guess I'm just curious as to, are there defined criteria, either time-wise or participation-wise?
Yeah, I think they just went up to the next step, right?
Mr. Nikotinsky, is that, that was a request from the union, correct? I don't think the board did that. I think.
And I think the last time they got an increase was two thousand eight.
And it was, if you saw the.
Oh, wait, Ms. Belko.
So it was based on the number of hours it takes and the expansion of the number of participants in the team was what was driving what sport should lay on what tier.
Okay.
And then also that concept of the club, I think it's dance, that they should qualify as a sport as opposed to a club based on the same kind of criteria.
Ms. Spearman, when you speak, though, get a little closer to the mic so we can get it. Are you getting that back there, what Ms. Spearman said? Yeah? Okay, good. I'm sorry, Ms.
Yeah, no, I was just going to add that, you know, the union representatives came and did a presentation, and it was very detailed of how the, those particular sports programs, how they began and how they've grown extensively. And it was more about making them comparable with their colleagues in other sports. So, you know, the time that's, the time, the practices, the amount of students, practices that they've had to, you know, increase. You know, they made a point, you know, that we should recognize, it's important to recognize that when you see sporting events going on on the weekends, you know, that's all outside of school time, right? So that's, they're putting a lot of their time into this, and it was just really balancing the sports that they felt that were not in the proper tier. So it was, I think it was three and then dance that they were requesting to move.
Anybody else on this side? Yes.
And also the strength of the programs have become better and better over the years, which have extended their seasons. So now they go weeks and many weeks longer, so, yeah.
Meaning they're winning more games and tournaments, so the coaches are actually putting in more time. Okay. Mr. Tofano.
I just want to add that what they were asking for requesting is in line with what the rest of the districts are receiving on the, at the same level. So they weren't asking for anything above the normal in other districts.
And if I may mention that the month prior, when the, when Dr. Alvik brought this to our attention and they just asked for these stipend raises, the board, the, was it finance or personnel? It was personnel, actually said, well, that's all well and good, but we have to have justification and we need information. So the board was very, I mean, the committee was very cautious and concerned about what, you know, to see the results and to see the data that would actually make.
Support it.
Yeah, support their presentation. Okay. All right, anyone else?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Polari.
Right now, if anybody hasn't seen our football team, you should come out and take a look at them. They're just awesome. In terms of the report, the last item that Mr. Nikotinsky said about the conducting interviews today for the interns who went in, given the importance, I've been preaching this for the last couple of meetings about the importance of getting the right person in place. Without getting into the details of the closed session, you know, we were looking at quite a few candidates, and all of a sudden, it appears that we're really limited to, I don't want to say even the number, in the spirit of being confidential, and then all of a sudden, we did not even board on that as a board, and here we are, conducting interviews today. That doesn't seem very transparent to me, Madam President. I think we should have, unfortunately, we have our backs up against the wall. I get that, but I think we should have had at least some sort of a resolution before we conducted these interviews.
And I actually agree with that, Mr. Polari, and we had a short window, we have a short window. And in the last two weeks, the two weeks prior to this, people were out of town, people were on vacation, people were not available. I would have liked to have had, you know, at least two meetings, two special meetings for this. So I do agree with you, and I think that we have to, we have thirty days to put in place in order to move forward. So I think we'll talk about that exactly in closed session tonight, and we'll come out with a little bit more of an explanation.
Do you have the list of the full packet of?
I have everything.
Okay, awesome.
I brought it, it's in my trunk, so I'm going to have to go get the big box when we're done.
We'll get it.
Yep. Okay, anyone else? Next committee report, please.
I have my committee report.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Kirby.
All right, I'll start with the shorter one. Community Engagement Communications Committee. We had an update on the sponsorship advertising initiative. Mr. Lehman shared that we have some pricing and some designs for templates for signs. We had a discussion about, I guess, the threshold being forty-four thousand and how we would, would it be, would we do it per project? Would, you know, one set of signs be one project, and then if we offered bigger signs, would that be another project? Because our line item in our budget is a hundred thousand dollars that we are trying to reach. So I think the next steps were to get clarification on that and then to look at putting together an advertisement to solicit vendors or to solicit, I guess, companies or businesses that would want to purchase a sign. And our second item on the agenda was communications survey. We had spoke about during the summer, putting together a communications survey to go out to the community. Dr. Alvik had put together a survey in, I guess it was Google, Google Forms. I think everybody has gotten a copy of that, and we had talked about possibly sending it out in October, sending it if we could. I know we had talked in committee previously about maybe asking the township to reciprocate since we sent out the township survey, if they would be willing to send out this survey to the greater community too to gauge how we're doing with communication, community-wide. So that is my report for that committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I failed to call it up. I, Dr. Al, Dr. Lehman, I'm very sorry.
I just wanted to give you a heads up because we did follow up. So Mr. Gorski and I, or I was in the room, Mr. Gorski called the attorney to verify. He was comfortable with separating projects as long as they were clearly separated project. He actually used the example of, we had talked about a year-long piece for some of these advertisements. There may be another area that could be a shorter term, like maybe it was an indoor piece with less, like for the basketball season. He said, the date of the advertisement or the date of the service of renting the sign or leasing the sign, that would, in his perspective, qualify as a separate project, so then we would kind of divert to the other, another potential threshold.
Okay.
And then Mr. Dowling provided extensive information. He went around and counted, recounted, and got a much clearer, accurate picture of not only the stadium area, the cage area as well, and the inside and the outside fences. And then he mentioned that our new athletic website will be coming on board shortly, which also has some banner space on it. So I can bring this information back to the committee.
Great.
And we can take an extensive look at it at the committee.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Decide what kind of projects go, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
If I may ask, just a comment that I had regarding the signs and the beautification. I know our schools and our buildings have beautiful grounds, so when we're putting those signs, just to keep the beauty, I know for years, our PTOs and PTA's after flower sales, we would plant plants and keep our gardens. So just keep in mind to not clutter too much and keep the beauty of our schools.
Hopefully, they'll be well-designed and, you know, approved. We will be approving them before they get put on, so I think we can have a control that.
And, and, Mr. Lehman had shared that Mr. Maraldo had done like a mock-up of them and trying to keep like a uniform kind of idea, like, you know, a Monroe kind of feel to the sign, but then having whatever advertisement that is worked into that. So it would be, it wouldn't just, you know what I'm saying? It would kind of keep almost a theme together, but it would be individual ads, obviously. But like a color scheme and.
We would have some sort of a template or.
Yes, yes.
It would be all uniform.
Consistent theme, I guess, right?
Right. So it wouldn't look like a mod, mod of different things. It would be classy and it would represent us well.
Yep, and we can bring some of those mock-ups, but it was a core, let's call it a yellow and purple or gold and purple piece. Then there was a gold one and a purple one, and those are kind of the core backgrounds, and then thread through the individual advertisement piece.
We can ask the art department to take a look and give suggestions, you know, of uniforms.
The creative is done in-house. So all the creative for the sign will be done in-house with us.
That's great. That'll give our students then an opportunity also.
We also have staff interns as well that will be working with us.
That'll be great. Gives a lot of opportunities for different things.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby, are you done with that committee and going to the policy?
And then I have policy, yes. So we did review a lot of policies, and I guess I'll start with policy one six four eight dot eleven. It's the Road Forward COVID-19 Health and Safety. So this is a policy that is replacing sixteen forty-eight Restart and Recovery Plan, which is on the agenda to be abolished. The only thing that I have a question, when I went back, Dr. Alvik, and I looked at it, the Road Forward has listed in there all appendices that are supposed to be included. And I know when we talked about it in policy, we said that that's already in the Restart and Recovery Plan, and we were just gonna move that over?
No, the appendice, I didn't put appendices, it's just incorporated into the plan. So it's not, the way that, the way that Strasasme had suggested was to just do the introduction and then list the appendices. The appendices are part of the plan, so they don't need to be named appendices. Everything that is required in the appendices is in the plan. They don't need to be separate.
Okay, well, I opened the plan today, and I didn't see, maybe I'm looking at the wrong document, but I did not see it all broken out by those exact appendices.
It may not be broken out by the exact appendices, but it has everything in it that it needs to have in it.
Okay, so then I guess my question is, for the Road Forward, there's a lot of discussion amongst parents, we're getting a lot of emails, there's a lot of discussion on social media. So in the Road Forward, this policy sixteen forty-eight dot eleven, does it, can we discuss the travel policy that we've put in place? And what that travel policy is, how it differs from our surrounding, surrounding districts with us, and how we came up with that criteria that we are putting forward to the parents?
So the travel policy that's in our plan is basically following the recommendations from the New Jersey Department of Health, which states to follow the recommendations of the CDC. So that's where the information is coming from. There are some districts that are not requiring anyone to quarantine after travel. I wouldn't make that recommendation. I think that it's important for us to make sure we're keeping our staff and our students safe when they get back. But the, the New Jersey travel restriction, travel advisory is no longer in effect. However, they, they, what, and I'm reading right from the state website. The CDC, however, has recommendations for both vaccinated and unvaccinated travelers. And that, that's what's in the guide. So the, basically what it says is for domestic travel, according to the CDC, unvaccinated individuals who do travel should get tested one to three days before their trip, three to five days after travel, and stay home and quarant, stay home and self-quarantine for seven days after domestic travel. The difference on the CDC website also says that it's seven days if we're in yellow or green, but it is fourteen days in orange. But you can shorten it by getting a test, three to five days, and come back after ten. The international travel requires, this is again, according to the CDC, requires all air passengers arriving in the United States from a foreign country to get tested no more than three days before their flight departs, and to present the negative result or documentation having returned from the flight. So that is the information that was shared out with parents, is following the CDC travel guidance. If, if the board chooses, we can not have quarantine after travel. That would be, that's another option. There are some districts that are not requiring that. It wouldn't be my recommendation.
Okay, so I guess my question is, where does that exist in a policy?
It's in the, the Road Back document, I'm sorry, the Road Forward document. On letter I, student and staff member travel.
And it stipulates exactly what you just said, our policy?
I actually copied and pasted it from the state website into our plan. So it's exactly what the, what the state website says.
Okay, so now if a, if a child does have to quarantine, I guess, you know, going further into that plan, if a child does have to quarantine, what happens to them during that period of time for education?
If they are traveling, they do not get access to virtual home instruction if they're traveling. During the quarantine time, because we're requiring them to quarantine, we were offering the virtual home instruction. Again, if the board chooses, we can say that travel, travel is not a necessity, and we wouldn't have, we don't have to offer the virtual home instruction for the quarantine time.
And what about for our staff?
Our staff, they have to take sick days. If they're quarantining, they have to take sick days.
So our policy is that you have to quarantine, yet we're not gonna provide education to the students?
No, we are providing education. I said it's another option that the board has. We are providing the virtual home instruction. We do not provide instruction while people are traveling. We don't do that. We don't do that now.
When they come back?
We didn't do that before COVID.
Okay, when they come back.
But during the quarantine time, they would be provided, because we're requiring them to quarantine.
Okay.
As soon as Ms. Skirby's done, Mr. Tofano, are you finished? Or do you have?
I have a question related to this quarantine, that's why I wanted to ask.
Okay.
No, no, go ahead.
So in, in this township, we have a huge, in this township, we have a huge rec program with the cheerleaders. In December, hopefully, over a hundred of them will be traveling to Disney for championships. Are we going to tell those hundred girls who work their tail off all year long that they're not gonna be able to go to school when they come back and see their friends and celebrate their win? I understand we're gonna give them virtual learning, but it's a big deal when they come back to see their other friends and say, hey, we just won a championship in Disney. Are we gonna allow them to take rapid tests maybe when they get back? And once they take a rapid test, then they know they don't have COVID, then they can return to school? Is that gonna be an option?
Rapid tests have not been accepted by the Department of Health. So again, if the board chooses, we can do away with the travel quarantine, and then that would, then when they get back, they wouldn't have to quarantine, they would be able to go back into the school.
So, so just so I know, and I'm sure the board would like to know, why is it that other districts have chosen not to do that? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
Like Dr. Alvik said, if the board chooses as a whole to make a motion to change any of these things, whether, you know, whatever the superintendent or the chief officer of the, of the school recommends, and if the board chooses to not have that, then that's up to the board. And we would, you know, whatever those consequences are, results of that, that's what we would also have to accept. Another, another thought, we have a few months, hopefully, maybe things will settle down. They could also increase. I mean, if our, if, if the variant increases problems in, with the virus, we might want to rethink that also. So I think, again, this is an active situation. It's not that one plan or one answer is going to, you know, let us proceed three months from now. I think it's, again, as frustrating as it is, and even though we, you know, a lot of us think that it's not a big deal, and I respect that, but we, I think we have to see how it goes down the road. We have to see what the progress of the virus, or maybe the end of it, hopefully. I mean, we don't want to put any of our children at risk either.
Well, that's why we have them wear a mask, right?
Well, you know, I, I, I'm not gonna debate that part.
No, it's not a debate, I'm just asking a question. We have our children.
That's one of the factors that we have in place.
Wearing a mask, so we don't put them in danger. But now we're saying if you're traveling and you come back, the mask is not gonna protect the other kids from, when they come back from Florida?
I, I think we're gonna have to wait and see on that, Mr. Tofano. Mr., I'm sorry, yes?
I just wanted to add on to what Mr. Tofano was saying. And I understand how he's saying like, girls that are going to Disney, they work their tail off, like you were saying, they're gonna be gone for how long again? Was it a week or?
Well, some, some parents, it's only three days, but some parents elect to take a few more days, being that they're spending a lot of money in Disney.
Yeah, that makes sense, and you're asking for them to come directly back to school and not do the online learning for that week when they're quarantining?
Well, I'm asking for them to be able to take a test and be able to come back to school. If the test comes back negative, there's no reason for the kids to stay out of school, in my opinion.
Well, honestly, if there's something that like COVID all taught us here, is that COVID's like, it's constantly changing, so we don't know how it is today, if it's gonna be like that during December, whenever they go. So honestly, like, we can't make that decision as a board right now, I think, but the bigger thing is, rather than like, you know, the girls enjoy, or the girls take the test, then they come back, the more important concern is about actually like everyone's safety, including the staff that work here, the students that go here, so.
That's the reason why we have a mask mandate, so everybody's safe.
Okay, we'll, we'll have, we'll have that, we'll continue that discussion in a few, in a month or so. Okay? Thank you for your input.
Okay, and then just going with that same policy, I guess, the, the home, the home instruction piece of that. So that, that goes hand in hand with the travel. If we're gonna have a hundred students out at the high school because they had to travel, because they traveled for this competition, what are our numbers? Are, are we able to handle that? I mean, we've, we've received some emails from parents with concerns that their child's out of school already a week and the home instruction has not begun. I thought we were, our policy was that it was going to start within forty-eight hours. Can we, what, what is happening with that, I guess? Because it's a, that's a real concern, and if we're gonna have this strict travel policy, we're going to have staff out, we're gonna have a large amount of students out, especially around the holidays, the November holidays, December holidays. So how are we prepared to keep, to implement this policy and continue to have school running?
Dr. Alvik, go ahead.
We are continuing to add staff members for virtual home instruction. You'll, you'll see that on your agenda this evening, that there's more staff members. And even since the agenda's gone out, we have more staff members that have signed up for that, so we continue to do that. One of the challenges that we had, and it's, again, this is new for all of us, this is something new. This, by doing the virtual home instruction, we feel that this is the best way to provide more in-depth instruction for our students, rather than just listening into a classroom over Zoom. Because if one student is listening into a class, they're not going to be getting the same instruction that they expected last year, and that they got last year, when it was, the teacher was half the students in the class and half the students online. So we felt that this was the best way to do it. There were some, there are some challenges to getting everything in place, because teachers are just coming back. Remember, this is only our ninth day of school since the beginning of the year. We have one secretary that's been handling it, she was out one day, so we've looked at staffing to try to put more staff in order to do that. There was, there's some delay in getting responses back from staff members, and I think that was because they weren't recognizing the email that it was coming from, because it was coming from a secretary's email, the request for home instruction. So I sent that information out to staff, so that they know that if you see an email from this person, that's what this is about, you need to respond. So we are getting it in place as soon as possible with our students. But the first thing that the, this staff, this secretary is doing is reaching out to the classroom teacher first, when it's identified that the student needs the virtual home instruction. If we don't hear back from that teacher right away, she reaches out, she reaches out again to make sure that, if that, because that teacher's on the list, make sure that the teacher is not interested in doing it. If the teacher's not interested in doing it, now she has to reach out to another group. So it may take a couple of days to put in it, we're doing our best to get it in place in forty-eight hours, but there may be some delays in that because of the staffing piece. But, but they're still going to get the time that they are, that they've, that they deserve. So even if they have to go a couple of days even after the student returns, they're going to get the hours that they, that they've earned for, for the home instruction, to make sure that they're caught up.
Okay, well, I, I just, I just want to reiterate concerns that I had dating back from August to the restart meeting. That myself and Ms. Beerman were there, and we both echoed each other's concerns. The students deserve to be educated while they are quarantining. We got a, we got emails, we got emails from parents whose kids are on quarantine because they were close contacts. That raises another question I have, how are they a close contact if everybody is wearing a mask? That's number one.
Remember, they're not wearing masks at lunch.
So how many, how many students do we currently have district-wide on quarantine because of lunch?
I can't say it's on because of lunch.
Or on quarantine, how many are on quarantine?
How many students are on quarantine is, we have a total of seventy-three students on quarantine.
And how many students have begun home instruction?
Most of them. I have the list from Ms. Young.
Most, but not all?
No, not all, but some of them just, we were just notified of it.
Well, the emails that we saw as board members were from parents that students in the elementary school were out already a week and have not had anything set up for those students. That is a long period of time for those students. We were, we were told, administration will have education for these students within forty-eight hours. See, the, the concern that myself and Ms. Beerman brought up, or other districts are allowing their students immediately to attend class remotely, their class, so that education does not stop. We're failing these kids that are on quarantine and not, and they're on quarantine, a lot of them, and they're not even sick, it's because they were a contact, and they're not allowed to come back to school, and we're also failing to give them the remote instruction. When you go back after ten days, you're far behind. It should be being continuous, so that when you go back to school, you can step back in and you can continue with your class, not catch up the last ten days. This is a disaster that I know we've spoken about, we've, we've cautioned about, and, you know, we, we were told to, that it was going to, it was well-planned, it was well-thought-out, it would be within forty-eight hours, every child would be starting home instruction, and it's not. And it's, it's not right for the children, it's not.
Catastrophe.
I, let's.
And again, I'd like to know where, you know, if we're talking about this policy, I would like to see, and maybe we could bring this back to policy, I would like to see all of what's in the plan to be incorporated into the policy, because that's what drives our district, is policy. And that's what we are supposed to hold firm to, is our policy. So everything that we are putting in that plan should be mirrored, I believe, in the policy.
The entire plan is in the policy.
Not, I opened up the policy today, all of the appendices are not in there.
There are no appendices. It's just, it includes all of the information, is incorporated into the plan.
But that plan then should be in. Well, the plan then should be into the policy, it should not be a separate document, it should be part of that policy.
It is part of the policy. The entire plan was copied and pasted into that policy.
That's not what I see on our policy guide. And maybe we could look back at that next one. All right, then the next, does anybody have any questions more on that policy? Now, okay, the next, the next. Now, okay, the next, the next.
Wait, Ms. Bierman?
So I couldn't find anywhere in the policy that said about the implementation, the launch of the home instruction within the 48 hours. That seemed to be something that we just discussed. Is that specifically in here? And I do recognize that I'm looking at the version that we had during committee, and that something's changed, because my travel was letter H and yours was letter I, so I'm not quite sure. I have the latest version here.
Okay, again, with the microphone.
On page 14 of the plan, under virtual instruction for quarantine students, it's listed there. Virtual home instruction will commence as soon as possible, but not sooner than 24 hours from notice of quarantine, following the timetable below. And it lists the amount of time, the amount of minutes per day that the students would be, would be offered.
What letter? The policy doesn't have page numbers.
It's under, under E of the plan.
Of the plan, not the policy.
The plan is in the policy. I'm checking right now to make sure that the policy was incorporated correctly on the board doc. But the policy that was presented at policy committee included the plan.
Ms. Belko, share that with us.
It is in the policy, of course, it's not numbered, so it is, it is letter E in the policy, 141.
So it's there. Can we move on if it's there?
Yes, 1648 dot 11, and it is, it's in the, I guess, this must be the regulation, because the policy says it's only three pages, so I'm a little confused. This is where. E, C, E, yeah, so.
Again, it doesn't say 48 hours, though. It says commence as soon as possible, but not sooner than 24 hours. That is not the same as starting within 48 hours, unless I'm missing something.
It looks like the, it looks like the plan was not incorporated into the policy the way it was supposed to be.
Exactly.
On, in board docs.
Okay, so you want to hold off on that?
We can hold off on that until next month.
But let, can we, can we try to clarify for the sake of the parents and the district? I mean, we can't hold this off too long, because people need to know what to do.
No, and we're already at 73 children. We know this is going to grow, it's not going to shrink.
Okay, so.
Yeah, how how are we handling that?
Okay, let's work on that.
At what point do we, at what point do we move move from home instruction to remote? A remote option for them to attend class remote, like other districts are doing?
Well, let's, let's worry about our district, and I understand other districts. If the board chooses to make that change, then do you, do you want to make a motion?
Yes.
We, this is, I mean, that's, that's the only way to change it at this point, Ms. Gerby, I mean, we have a recommendation.
I think it should be a discussion of the board. If we're not educating over 70 children that are on quarantine, and the number's going to keep growing, what are we doing?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Polari.
I'm a little confused. I I I see the committee chair saying that we're not educating 72 children, and I'm hearing Dr. Alveg saying that we are educating as many as possible, other than people coming in. What is the, what's the truth? How many kids are being educated? How many kids are not being educated?
Well, I think it's a matter of timing. I don't think that.
I understand, if somebody comes in 24 hours, you don't expect all of a sudden for this to happen.
Right.
But clearly, there are parents sitting here, they're looking for an answer to see when their kids can get instructed, so if we can satisfy them, then we can worry about the logistics and what's in policy, what's in the plan is is different. But right now, the kids need to be educated, are they being educated or not, to the extent we possibly can, that's the question, really.
Well, I think the question is, when when are they exposed to instruction? Let's, you know, if we just want to say it a little bit different, when does the instruction begin? Is that what your question is, Ms. Gerby?
Well, we were told it was supposed to begin within 48 hours, and we're hearing that it's not. So what are we doing to rectify it? And what are the options? Because the, to have a child, to have multiple emails being sent and 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 shared with us, that it's been over a week, and they still do not have home instruction set up, is a failure to those students.
So is it taking that long still to get instruction started?
No, there was on, last week, there were 30 students that were added to the list because of travel and close contact. So yes, with one person working on that, it took some time for that staff member to be able to do that. Part of the issue, too, is getting the information, you know, we want, we get the information from the school nurse, the school nurse sends it to the, send it to the PPS office, PPS then sets up the home instruction. So there has been, there was a delay in that, and that's why I mentioned earlier, getting extra help into that office, so that we can have more people working on this to get it happening quicker.
So, so let me play devil's advocate here. If if remote instruction was set up, would that be more immediate than virtual?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, but, yes, we could probably do it within, again, within 48 hours, because the teachers, right now, are doing lesson plans and planning their lessons for the students that are physically in front of them. If they're now going to set up a camera in their room, so that a student who is home can now get access to the, to whatever instruction, whatever paperwork is needed, and then the student would be able to log in, the teacher needs time to plan to, in order to give that information. It will also not be the same as last year, because you now have a teacher who's standing in a classroom in front of 24 students, and her primary, her or his primary responsibility will be to teach those 24 students in front of them, not the one student on the computer all day long.
So, so what happens if the district gets shut down tomorrow?
If the district gets shut down, we go full remote.
Are we prepared to go full remote?
Yes, we are prepared to do that.
But there's no cameras in the, in the classrooms?
The teachers, the teachers have computers.
Okay.
The teachers have computers.
So what's the difference? Why can't they just do a remote option for the kids that are quarantining?
Because, again, if they're planning for the students who are physically in front of them, now they have to transition for one student and prepare all of those lessons and those pla, and those plans, and whatever classwork there is, in order to get it to that student.
So, may I?
Mr.?
So, let's, let's take this from the perspective of a teacher as well, okay? It's not that easy to juggle that responsibility, and I'm going to assume the teacher's contract is going to get, have to be discussed in order to pull off a, a two-for-one kind of a deal like that. So it's not as easy as just turning on the camera.
So, just the kid just sitting at home for seven days and not doing anything, right?
The kid's going to get, the students will all get their instruction, I'm sure, is what Dr. Alveg is saying. But as a teacher, it's just not that easy, and if you have never been a teacher, you just don't understand what it is to teach to a classroom and then think that there's, you obviously don't.
I understand, because if I have a kid.
You don't understand.
If I have a kid sitting at home for seven days not getting instructed.
You're a catastrophe.
There's an issue.
Let's be clear.
Okay. There's an issue.
All right, let's keep it civil. Okay, so clearly, we, we don't have a resolve on this. We would have to have some kind of meeting, I mean, if, if, perhaps we need to.
It's not working.
To call, to call, it hasn't worked yet. We don't, perhaps we need to get some information on the data from other, other schools that are doing that.
I can tell you that most other schools are doing exactly what I just described, having the, having a camera in the room where the students can listen in. The students are not part of the classroom, they're not part of the, the lesson.
When you'll have an opportunity to sleep when we do the public.
Right, but it's temporary, right? It's only for seven days.
All of this is temporary.
So what is the big issue?
All of this is temporary.
Right, so.
Okay, do you want to make a motion to change things? Because we have a recommendation.
I'd love to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I, I guess I'll make a motion to have, I guess, remote instruction, like a hybrid plan.
As an option, or as?
For, for kids that are quarantined for seven days.
And don't have, can I, can I add to your motion? Can I ask you to amend it? And don't have the opportunity for home instruction. There are children sitting at home doing nothing, all day long, with no, no plan for anything.
Okay, so, okay, I got that.
So, can I have a question? Can I clarify the question? Because, so are you saying now you want us to offer both? You want us to offer the home instruction?
No.
Because you just said, if, Ms. Gerby did, she said, if the student can't do the home instruction. So do we want, we can't offer both?
I would just remove the home.
Okay, that's fine.
What, which one?
Just remove the home instruction.
I beg your pardon?
Remove the home instruction, just make it remote.
So just have, just turn on the, so have, have the teachers turn on the computer, and that's it.
Right, it's only for seven days.
That would be the only, that would be the only contact that the, that the student, that the student would have with the classes.
Well, he's not getting any contact right now.
Most of the students who are on home instruction are getting contact right now.
Okay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Can I just add one thing, just adding on to what Mr. Retske said, it is, it is challenging as a facilitator, a teacher, to manage two classrooms, because that's what you're ideally doing. You're managing the room. When you take elementary students, you're, you have to watch what's happening there. You almost need to have another teacher, another aide, someone.
Which you don't have.
Which we don't have. So I think you need to be cognizant of the teacher's perspective of this also.
Do, you know what, Mr. Gorski rightly pointed out, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, now there is. Any, Mr. Polari?
I, I missed a little bit of it, but I think I understand the quirks of it. The question is really to Dr. Alveg, at being the superintendent of schools, can we accommodate it? Do we have the resources in place to even implement? It'll be irresponsible, okay.
Yes.
So I would, go ahead, Ms. Bierman, because I would like to.
I just want to clarify, so the concept that we're proposing is a listening in, not the quote-unquote hybrid that we were familiar with from last year, just so everybody is clear, or even if I'm clear. It's not hybrid from last year, where the teacher was facilitating both classrooms and had extra preparation time during the day, during the week, to make sure that that happened. What we see in Manalapan or other districts is the, almost like being able to just tune the radio in, the child is not actually participating and being provided with the materials, there, but, you know, it's better than not having any access at all. But now, if we're saying we're going to replace home instruction with this listening in, I just want to be cautious as to what we're offering, and.
Right. And, and so what we're saying is, the child will not really be engaged in the classroom, because all they're going to be doing is, it's essentially an observation of the classroom, not really a participation, and the, and the student will not be engaged with the teacher.
Why can't they?
Because the teacher has 24 students in front of them that they are, that they're engaged with. The teacher doesn't, isn't sitting at their desk anymore. Last year, they were sitting at their desks.
But if the student has a question, they can't ask a question?
No.
How would the teacher be able to monitor the 24 students in front of them and the student online at the same time? Remember, we're not just talking six kids and six kids, we're talking a larger group now, in front of them.
So I feel like the listening in needs to be an additional accessibility.
Hang in there. No, I'm saying, Karen, go ahead. I'm going to, I'm going to let the students hold off on that.
I feel like the listening in would have to be in addition to the resources we're allocating already for home instruction, not instead of, is my point here, I guess.
Mr. Retske.
So I'd just like to pose this question to our two doctoral administrators here, Dr. Alveg, Dr. Lehman. In your opinion, which is a better, which is a better option for students outside of the school? To listen in as a bystander, or to have home instruction via a remote teacher? So I, I just want your professional opinion, because I'm not a teacher, and nobody else on this board is a teacher.
And before he answers that, when we talk about virtual.
Right.
That, is the teacher engaging with the student on ver, on virtual?
Home instruction.
The virtual home instruction.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, so right, so professionally speaking, which is a better alternative for our students when they're not home?
If they receive it on time, right?
Well, they will receive it, it's been nine school days. But anyway, what do you think, professionals?
The point, the point is, they're not.
I understand, I understand, you got an email that we did not get, so we're not privy to that, but.
It came to the entire board.
Uh, no.
Okay, let's answer, have the question answered.
But anyway, I would like the answer from our professionals, that we, that we pay and we respect their opinion.
Our, the, the reason that we chose to do the virtual home instruction is because we felt that it would be better for the students to get two hours of one-on-one instruction with their, with their teachers, rather than just listening to a class where they're really not part of the class.
You would agree, Dr. Lehman, or you have a different opinion?
I think there has to be some level of engagement with the teachers, and whether that's in real time or after the fact, that's what it has, that's where the, the questions get answered. And if you think of this, the other piece of what we're looking at is, we're a pre-K through 12 district. So pre-K student on quarantine, who's three, four years old, I don't know what they're going to get out of, you know, just looking and listening into a lesson, they probably can't even sit in front of the computer for that long. So the challenge is, how do we fit and meet the needs of all the varied levels of students and things? So engagement is where it's at, the back and forth with the teacher, you know, it would be, seeing the interaction, the socialization piece, that's shifting back way towards where we were last year, and I think it's, you know, there's a balance. We, the recommendation was the, the virtual home instruction for two and a half hours after school for the elementary students, and, you know, prorated, per se, for all the other levels, and that is a, is it a one-for-one minute exchange? No, but in a tutoring environment, in a live environment like that, the quality and personalization of the interaction, I think, definitely makes up for that. Many of the high school teachers we've heard from, students who are on home instruction historically, actually do really well when they come back to school, because it's, who gets 40, 50 minutes of tutoring on exactly what you're getting in classroom, your homeroom teacher, your classroom teacher? So that was the, the thought process behind this in the beginning. It's all about the execution, making sure it happens, getting it flowing and getting it going. So I respect all of the opinions, I respect where all this is coming from, and we certainly have challenges, so, you know, it's, it's up for debate right now, and obviously it is, so, that's the opinion. It's all about the interactions with the student, between the student and teacher.
I really appreciate all the feedback.
Did you want Dr. Alveg?
Mr. Armaniel?
Oh, Mr. Chiarela, I forgot you were in ether. Can, can Mr. Tufano speak?
I just.
And then, and then you, okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Tufano's got his hand up, okay?
I, I, I think this could be resolved very simple. All we have to do is, if we're going to require kids to quarantine, what should be done is, we should give a guarantee to their parents that within 24 hours, their home instruction will start. It's a very simple solution.
Well.
Within, within 24 hours. One day, the kid can be home, relaxing, because they're, they're obviously need to see some symptoms, and then, after that, within 24 hours, I don't see why administration can't, within 24 hours, get home instruction set up.
Well, I, I mean, I, I don't know that I'm, I really can't answer that question.
Well, let's ask the two professionals.
However, it seems, I know, but it seems to me that staffing is an issue across the board.
Okay, well, let's, let's do what Mr. Retske did, let's ask.
So putting, putting an hour certain, and I, I do agree with Mr. Nikotinsky that, and, and Ms. Gerby, that if they haven't done this yet in 48 hours, you know, what's the problem? But it seems the problem is a problem of timing, not instruction. If the instruction is there and the instruction, uh, helps the children, it's a matter of timing and that has to be worked out. Now, maybe it should have been worked out, maybe we should have had, you know, but we don't know how many children. But we'll have to assume however many children we have this week, it's, it's potentially double. And we have to be staff ready for that kind of thing. I don't know.
My, my question is, Dr. Alvik, if you have additional staff, can we guarantee parents that within 24 hours?
24 hours, no.
Forty-eight.
That, that's, that is our goal right now is 48 hours.
Okay.
Is getting it in place.
Mr. Chiarella, can you hear us?
I can, thank you. Uh, so I'm just trying to figure out what this motion is because it sounds to me like we're going to get rid of home instruction completely and then institute this remote option without any, without any teaching capacity, where we're, where the kids then who are on quarantine are just going to basically put the computer on and watch the class that they can't be a part of, do whatever they're doing, but they're not going to be instructed at all. I, i- i- is that what the motion is about?
Well, that.
Yes.
That, that's the motion at, at this time.
Okay, I'm going to vote no on that one.
Unless you need to amend.
I actually wanted some interaction. That's, that's what I want. I want interaction. It's only temporary.
So, so then you need to amend the emo.
Well, that's what I said from the beginning.
But I don't know, that's the problem. You have one teacher in a classroom with 25 students. They're not going to be able to do one-on-one instruction with a student online with 25, with 24 students in front of them physically. When would they do that, that interaction with that student online?
I don't know. That's, that's.
That, that's, and that's what I'm telling you, as an educator, that's the difficulty.
Mr. Polari?
Madam President.
And then we're going to call the vote.
Yeah. Um, we're talking about the, the students and the teachers. And these two individuals represent the student board. If there is a topic, they should be participating. This is the topic they should be participating, maybe not the other ones. So I.
You would like to hear from them?
I would like to hear from them very quickly so that we understand where the students are coming from.
Well, hi, again.
And they're, let's, let's say they're two students and they are representative, but they're just two voices.
Right. This is a huge school district. We cannot possibly speak for every single kid in the district. It's impossible. There's been a lot of group work this year, so it's, I, it's hard for teachers to kind of figure out, okay, what is this one person going to do by themselves at home while four people in class have the same amount of work and they're working on it together in a short amount of time? We only have eighty, at the high school, we only have 84 minutes. And we're trying to maximize the amount that we're learning in those 84 minutes. One person working by themselves is not going to learn the same amount of four people working together. So as you guys make your plan, please think about the fact that people need to collaborate, they need to work together. And if that means working one-on-one with someone at the end of the day, where they can maximize the amount that they're learning in their short amount of time, that might be the best option. I would also suggest that you bring it to the teachers, the ones who are actually teaching us, the ones who know us best. They are the ones who are going to work in our best interests.
Okay, thank you. Let's.
I definitely agree. I think that like, first off, before I can answer this, I just want a little bit more information. So you're saying that the students who are quarantined right now, what type of instruction are they getting?
They're getting one-on-one virtual home instruction once it's set up.
Once it's set up, but as of right now, what are they getting?
Nothing.
Not, no, that's not, that's not true.
Alright.
There are a couple of students that it has not been set up yet.
Okay.
Alright, so I mean, I understand this is like a huge struggle for all of us to solve because there's little like kids that are, you know, they need actual like engagement with the teacher to understand how to do ABCs. But like, you know, kids in high school, at least for us, we've been doing online learning for the past like year or two. And I think one thing that's like really helped me at least as an individual to learn, or a student to learn, is not just the engagement, but like, you know, record the lessons, maybe the office hours after school, maybe some sort of Zoom meeting. But like, it doesn't necessarily, the Zoom meeting necessarily doesn't have to be during the school time. Like, of course, it's going to be hard for our teachers to be like working extra and doing an extra 20 minutes a student, but.
There's a, that, that's a whole other issue of, again, staffing. And no, I think, I think we appreciate your, your time. Okay. Mr. Nikotinsky.
Well, if you can't guarantee 48 hours, then it's got to be removed, so.
I don't think guaranteeing, I mean, if we.
I mean, thir.
Can we?
Seventy-two hours is, it's just, that's three days already.
So what? But it will be, if they catch up with the, they catch up with the lessons.
Yes.
So the teacher is going to be required to bring the student up to the lesson. By the time they return, they will be on par with the rest of the class.
May not be by the time they return, but if they are still owed hours, the hours would continue even after they came back to school.
So that, that's my concern, Michelle. So if you have a student that's been out for that extended period of time and their home instruction, say, starts on day nine and they return on day 11, okay, what about the rest of the eight days that they have not received the home instruction for? They go back into class, what are they doing when they're back in class? They're behind. So is that then on that teacher, i- is that then on that teacher to get that student then up to par? Or is that going to happen after school? You see what I'm saying?
No, no, and I, and I think that it is absolutely unacceptable to start the student at day nine, that's for sure. If we can't get them between 48 and, I don't know, I mean, what? Seventy, I don't know, 72, yeah. Then, then that's a prob, then that's a problem. Do, do, can, can we bring this program up to the 48 hours? No, or no more than the 70?
We're doing the best that we can right now and we're, like I said, we are looking for, we have additional staffing, trying to make sure that teachers know that we need an answer right away, whether they're going to do it or not, so that we can put it in place as soon as possible. Again, this is new for all of us. We're on, only on day nine of school. We will, it, it will get better, but we have to just get into the groove of doing it.
Because we're, we're going to approve two people tonight for home instruction.
A lot of people, there's a lot of people on the list.
More than the two?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a large.
And you said there's even more since the agenda?
And there's at least 20 more since the agenda went out on Friday.
Problem should be solved soon.
Well.
Or addressed.
But, but, okay, but at the concern of the parents, and I think it's legitimate, the concern of some board members, what if it is not? So what is our plan if it is not? So that's the, that's the, the question, because again, it sounds like it's a question of timing. Mr. Nikotinsky and Ms. Skirby, if these were happening within the 48 hours, is that an acceptable program?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a matter of timing, it's not about the program. Okay, can we agree with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Alright, so then, how much time do we want to get? We're going to have a special meeting probably next week sometime for superintendent search. Why don't we put that on the agenda, give them till next week and see how it has worked out? Is that acceptable? Ms. Skirby, we have a motion and we're going to have to vote on it or we're going to have to rescind it, but Ms. Skirby, yes.
Yes, and I think I had, I had emailed you and the administration and asked for, and, and this would help us as board members understand what is going on. If we could get a report, maybe a weekly report in our, you know, confidential that we get, with how many students are quarantining, how many are on home instruction, and the date the home instruction began. You know, that will give us a clear picture of what's going on. And I think that would be helpful to, to, for us to decide.
That'll be the next motion. Let's deal with what we've got. Either we vote on this the way Mr. Nikotinsky has proposed, or he rescinds it and we give them another week to work it out, or not. So, Mr. Nikotinsky, it's your motion.
Vote on it.
And Mr. Gagliardi, if I am, if I am making any errors in this, please speak up.
Okay.
Are we, are we okay so far?
We're okay so far.
Okay. It's your call.
I don't know. Say vote on it.
Okay. There's a vote on, so, Mr. Gorski, if you'll please call the roll, but we have to know exactly what the resolution is.
Can you read the motion again, please?
Yeah, I need a more clear resolution.
Mr. Nikotinsky, what is exactly is your?
Just have like a virtual option for the kids for, and interactions with the teacher.
With interactions.
With interaction with the teacher.
That, that's going to be a challenge. I'm just putting that out there.
Everything's a challenge, so.
Well.
I'm not going to have kids sitting at home for seven days and twirling their thumbs.
And this would be instead of the home instruction?
Yes.
Yeah, what about until home instruction can be implemented?
Yeah, I, we could amend that to that.
So now we're back to both things again?
Until home instruction is.
But you still have to have a time limit until, what does that mean? Like?
After forty, after 48 hours, if it's not implemented, home instruction, then it's remote, full remote with interaction.
That I consider.
Until home instruction starts. I think that's fair.
The, logistically, it might be difficult, but that's your motion?
I second.
Madam, madam.
Go ahead.
For, for clarity and, and accurate minute keeping, I ask the gentleman to please slowly repeat his motion in the form of a motion so that I can capture all of the components.
Okay. I propose a motion for virtual option. Wait, after, if, if within 48 hours, if home instruction is not, hasn't started, then it's full remote with interact, with interactive with this, with the teacher, until home instruction is implemented.
Virtual home instruction.
Virtual home instruction.
May I repeat that?
Go ahead.
Motion moved by Mr. Nikotinsky for a virtual option within 48 hours if home instruction hasn't started and it will continue until home instruction can begin.
The, the motion was if the home instruction has not commenced within 48 hours.
Right.
Right.
If, if home instruction has not commenced within 48 hours, the student should be offered a virtual option with the classroom teacher until such time as home instruction begins. Is that correct, Mr. Nikotinsky?
With interaction of the homeroom teacher.
Is that it?
Yes.
Madam, may I try that again?
Please.
Motion made by Mr. Nikotinsky for a virtual option. If home instr, virtual option with interaction. If home instruction hasn't begun within 48 hours, and it will conclude until home instruction can begin.
It will continue until home instruction can begin, and I think the motion needs to identify that this is for quarantined students. That's how this began. You didn't say who it's for.
Quarantined students.
It's for students who are, that were, that, the district is forcing to quarantine for a period of time, and this is the nature of the instruction they're going to be offered.
I didn't, I didn't hear that as part of.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's for quarantined students.
Ms. Armani, this is, may I?
Yes, please, Mr. Chiarella.
You seem to be all over the place where we can't even come up with what we're, what we're trying to do here. I think we should take a little break on this, let, go to public forum, let the, let, let the public speak. Come back later today when we could maybe better.
I, I agree, but the motion is on the table. I think we have to.
Need to second someone.
And it's been seconded, we're going to try to do parliamentary procedure here. On, can we wait until after the?
So, right, so hang, hang, just.
Hang on.
I'll, I'll handle the parliamentary aspect of it. So there's a motion on the table. If the motion is not seconded, the board need not, need not do anything. If the motion is seconded, then whether it's Mr. Chiarella or someone else can make a motion to table. If there's no motion to table, then the board is going to vote.
So, Mr. Chiarella, you, did you want to make a motion to table it until after the public portion or table it?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to table this until we could come up with a better, not, maybe not a better motion, but codify it, come up with some real meat and ideas about what we're trying to do here. Because kids are, our, our children are impacted. So if we're getting rid of home instruction and we're going to put a virtual option in only, and they're just going to watch, or we're going to do a hybrid and we're really not nailing down exactly what we're going to do, well, tomorrow's going to come and these things are going to be implemented. If we make a mistake on this tonight or right now, we're going to deal with it tomorrow and we're going to be impacting children. We should not be, you know, on the fly motions and things like that. I, I get they have a place and time for smaller budgetary items maybe and things like that, but not when you're, you're, not when you're dealing with potentially sick children.
Alright, there's a tape, it's, there's a table on the, so we have to vote on the, on whether we table this or not. That's, there's no discussion.
Madam, we need a second.
I, I'll second tabling that, please.
No, no, hang on a second, we need a second on the motion before we can consider the motion to table. There's no.
Mr. Tofano did second it, but I don't know if he seconded the final version.
Seconded by Mr. Tofano.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, there's been a motion to table, and Mr. Rucki seconded, Mr. Ruski seconded the motion to table, is that correct, sir?
Correct.
Okay, so that means there's going to be a roll call and a motion to table, no further discussion.
Right.
But the tabling until when?
Not when there's a motion to table.
Till next meeting or till after public forum?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, just wait for a week and do it.
Mr. Chiarella, table it until after the for, the public forum or just table it?
Yes, I, I'd like, I, to be honest, I'd like some time to think about it. I'd like to hear if there are people in the public who have anything to say.
Just answer the question, to table it for the meeting tonight or table it until after public portion?
After public forum.
Okay.
Okay, is that the motion you seconded, sir?
Not exactly, but I will second that motion.
Okay.
I'll stick with that.
Alright, so now there's a motion to table until after public comment on the floor. It's been seconded, parliamentary procedure, there's no discussion. There's just a yes or no vote on the motion to table.
Okay.
Ms. Skirby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Ruski?
Yes.
Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Ms. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion passes to table until after public forum.
Okay, so, uh, do we have any other?
I, I have.
Well, I, I didn't finish though, Michelle. I'm sorry, it's, it was a long, uh, meeting. So then we also talked about policy number 1648.13, school employee vaccination requirement. That is a mandated policy, and I know Dr. Alvik was working on the, I guess, how we were going to implement that. We didn't, we haven't heard how that's going to happen. Do we have any update on that?
The update that I heard from the county superintendent on Friday is that we should be hearing from the state this week sometime about a company that can come in and do the testing for us.
Okay, so that's going to be what we're going to put in our policy then, will be that a company will be coming in-house to do?
Right now, the policy is just the general policy. Once we get the actual plan of what's going to happen, hopefully that's what's going to happen, that a company is going to come in from the state, then that would be the appendix A for that policy.
Okay.
But I think what was discussed at policy was that we were just going to vote on the, the general policy, that we have to put this in place tonight, and then appendix A would be voted on next month.
Okay. Uh, well, that has to be put in place by October 18th.
Yes.
What's mandatory by the state.
Right, but I don't have the information yet from the state.
Well, I, I, okay. Other districts do have plans in place already for how they're going to be testing and, and what they're going to be doing.
No district has been notified from the state yet of what the company is that they'll be.
They're coming up with their own plans themselves based on what is.
There were two options. This is what I discussed at policy also. There were two options. A district could say they wanted option one, which is where a company, the state would have a company come in and work with us to put it in place. If a district's already had a testing procedure in place, they could choose option two, which the state would then just give them funds to help them with their option two. Since we didn't have one in place, I picked option one. And that, that's what I was told last Friday by the county superintendent, is that we would hear this week about the company in place. In, in addition to that, what I have done is I have already started gathering the information about how many staff members are not vaccinated. So I already have a list of exactly who so far need, need, will need testing the week beginning October 18th.
Okay, and what is that number?
Uh, right now it's at 184. I'm still waiting on some staff members to respond. There's a small number that we have, that has not responded to yet. I, I, if we don't get the final number by Fri, their final answer by Friday, they're going to be added to the list. Um, because I, I won't have any other way of knowing, so they will be added to the list there. Because I'm waiting for the state to give us that information on, uh, uh, the company to come in, I have also reached out to three other companies that will come in and do testing for us once a week. But again, the question is the cost, because the district is now responsible for this cost. So my hope is that we get the comp, the state to come in, because otherwise we're going to have to do bids.
Okay, and we're going to have that all set up then by the 18th?
It has to be.
Okay. Alright, the other policy that we discussed was policy and regulation 5200 attendance. That we had discussed about the integrity pledge that was, um, put out for the high school students. Um, and there was questions that had been brought up about what was an excused absence and unexcused. And in the policy, it was, um, I had mentioned that in the policy, it does say that a parent note for, um, a medical reason why you're not in school is an excused absence. And I know that, um, previously, uh, there have been times at the high school where a parent note was not acceptable to excuse an absence, that it was only a medical note. So I know, Dr. Alvik, you said you were going to reach out to the administrators.
I did, I already had a meeting with them.
And, and that would be now acceptable?
To follow the policy.
A parent note can excuse a medical absence at the high school. Okay, great, thank you. Um, and then there was on, for a second reading tonight is regulation 7510, use of school facilities. That's where we made the, it was already a first reading, we haven't changed anything, so that's for a second reading for tonight. Um, and then there were a few other mandated policies from Strauss Esme that were on here with, um, Meyer wording changes, um, the surrogate parent and resource family parents, eligibility of resident, non-resident students, education of homeless children. Um, and then, as I mentioned, there is a list of policies to be abolished. They can be abolished with one reading, uh, this evening.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Any questions? Alright, let's move on to the public forum. I'm sorry, Mr., oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tofano, you're very quiet tonight. Go ahead. Go ahead.
You are buildings. Buildings, grounds, and transportation, it was Wednesday, September fourteen, September fourteenth, we had three items on the agenda. I, I opened the meeting and asked Mrs. Chanley, middle school principal, Mr. Higgins, and Mr. Siddler, the middle school assistant principals, to begin the discussion relative to adverse effects of removing the sixth grade from the middle school. Mrs. Chanley advocated on behalf of her administrative team to keep the sixth grade in the middle school configuration. She presented that there were many positive considerations for such, including the social and emotional benefits for students, the close proximity to the high school for sharing of programs and services, the middle school current building configuration, which mimics the high school, the three years that the students attend the middle school provides for a smooth transition to high school. And all six academic teams, teams, including area specialists, will be located in the same building. Ms. Chanley also mentions, mentioned the detriments of pulling out sixth grade, including consideration for the teaching staff, indicating that you just can't move teachers within departing grade levels because of cert, certifications and other reasons. Ms. Chanley disclaimed that although she is not an architect, they would need to add additional cafeteria, they would need to add an additional cafeteria to the back of the middle school, and create at least eight additional classrooms or more to replace the trailers. She mentioned that whatever the plan would be, it would have to include enough classroom space and comply with the New Jersey Department of Facilities requirements. I also asked if there were any administrative questions from Dr. Alvich, Mr. Gorski, or Mr. Lehman. All presented their questions and concerns, including the magnitude of students that would be reject, projected to be in the middle school, which could exceed twenty-one-hundred. Ms. Chanley stated that numbers would be manageable, and that the team, with a team approach to instruction, and with the addition of an, with the addition of an additional cafeteria, additional classrooms as per due requirements and applicable staff. The second item on the agenda was the school opening transportation update. I introduced Ms. Kathy McDonald, Director of Transportation, to provide a school opening transportation update. Ms. McDonald highlighted for the committee all of the efforts to prepare the opening, which began before June. Ms. McDonald informed the committee that her office updated all of the current routing requirements for all new enrollments and construction. She also discussed how the six contracted routes with Middlesex County Education Service Commission didn't receive any bids despite being put out to bid twice. With the board's understanding, Ms. McDonald brought the routes back in-house by deploying every bus and hiring six drivers. Ms. McDonald indicated that despite customary challenges that are inherent with the first day of school, the transportation office has ironed out many of the problems leading to many of the buses arriving on time to schools. Ms. McDonald also notified the committee of the extreme national driver shortage, which she remedied by soliciting drivers from other districts to work in Monroe. Ms. McDonald indicated that this district is still challenged by cul-de-sacs, which prohibit fifty-four passenger buses from entering, because there isn't enough space to turn around. And with the turning radius, radius due to the new buses being forty-three, forty-three feet long, a typical cul-de-sac is forty to forty-five feet. And when you consider obstacles such as parked cars, landscaping vehicles, garbage cans, snow, it reduces the turning radius even more. The only, the only alternative would be to call the police to assist them when backing up of the bus because of the danger and invisibility involved. The committee members expressed application, appreciation for the update and her understanding for reason why the fifty-four bus, passenger buses cannot enter a cul-de-sac safely. And the third item, and the last item on the agenda, was the flashing school traffic safety lights project at the middle school and the high school. Mr. Gorski updated the committee that the four flashing safety lights posted have been installed. The contractor, Quality Electric, is scheduled to final inspection with Monroe Township Building Department for later this week. Once the inspections are approved, the flashes will be energized and made operational. Administration is now seeking for cost reimbursement from the township of approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
And that concludes the report.
Thank you, any questions? Any questions for Mr.?
Madam President, I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Pelori?
Mr. Gorski, is, is it three or four signs? I recall three, Peter. One on Schoolhouse Road, another one on Perrinville Road, coming from both sides, is there a fourth one?
Um, far as I know, there was two as well. That's what we, we had discussed, there's two locations.
Three, did you say?
Two.
Three, three.
It was, right, there's three, there's one on Perrinville and two on Schoolhouse, right?
Doesn't matter, but I'm glad to see that, and people see when they're coming in, they were installed and they're, they've been operational this week, so you can actually see the speed.
Right.
One question I have, I'm going to be on this for the next two months, so bear with me, please, about the plans for building the new school. In twenty nineteen, we had an ad hoc committee that made a recommendation, and I'm not sure if that has been taken into consideration by the building grounds and transportation, even with some of the modifications that have been discussed. The time is running out on us to do something with that. The second thing is, I missed the last board meeting, so I apologize for that, but there was some communication in the electronic media about adding a upstairs or next floor on the middle school. Did the facilities manager, Jerry Tagg, actually say that that's feasible? Because I recall in twenty sixteen.
I don't know where you got that information from, but we didn't speak about a second floor in the middle school at all.
Okay, good, because I'm very concerned if somebody is, is proposing to add any additional capacity on the middle school.
No, we actually didn't discuss anything at the middle school during that meeting, and, and, you know.
Yeah, but, say no more, Peter, that, that's how the social media and Facebook is in these days in our town, so I, I.
Anything else? Okay, may I?
But I, I'd just like to add to that, we, we had Ms. Chanley here because, like Paul had pointed out, it's best to ask the experts. So she runs her school, in, in my opinion, excellent, and she knows better than anyone what her school needs. So that's why I decided to invite her here, and she told us that she would like to add a second cafeteria on the back of the, of the school, and eight classrooms would be what she needed, so that's what we had discussed.
But with all due respect, Peter, she's not an architect, she's not an engineer, she doesn't know the functions.
She didn't say how it could be done, or if it could be done, she just said what she would like to see happen.
I hear you, I made the point.
And I, and I read that she had mentioned that she is definitely not an architect, but she does know what her school needs, and how it could function best. That's the architect's job, to design how it could fit in there now.
I think, again, and like you said, it's, it's at a crisis point, we've been at a crisis point for ten years. Uh, we are constrained by finances, but also we are trying to open all options. I know we keep talking about different things, but one of these, you know, it, it, we're going to make it stick, we've, we've actually, I think the, the options or the discussions are pretty good. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Tofano, was there any discussion about Applegoth School?
There was just some discussion about some additions that may be needed at Applegoth School, but nothing decisive.
The price tag was pretty high on the Applegoth School design, and we were a little taken aback by that, I think. But, you know, things have changed in the marketplace, Ms. Kirby, go ahead.
Yeah, and just to clarify something that Mr. Pelori had asked. I'm not exactly sure exactly which meeting, what the date was the meeting, but I know that you had specifically asked Mr. Tagg if an addition could be put on the middle school, and he answered yes.
That was, I think that was the BGNT meeting.
That was the.
That was.
That was the last one. He did say, he did say that we could expand.
The August one, not the September one, because I was.
We could expand the middle school.
The night that S and P came and presented the proposal, yes. So that's where we're putting an addition on came from.
Michelle.
Yes.
So that's my question, like, there was a special BGNT meeting since the last board meeting, and is the board going to get an update on that meeting? Like, so this recap was from the last monthly committee meeting, we haven't had any apprisement of the special meeting.
Right, I think, again, because it, we were, we had a little shell shock, we were hoping that the design was going to help us reduce the price of the school, so we can get a referendum done. So I think that's, you know, we're, it, it's very difficult. I mean, we can put a referendum out, you know, as soon as possible, but we want the referendum to pass, because we've had two failed ones, so that's our reality. And our reality and our wish list are not really, but to answer your questions.
Next step is another special meeting?
I, I think there should be, yeah, because the whole board needs to see what we're up against. And I agree, you know, we've all agreed that it's, it's way past time, but we, we've, we've put out referendums and they have failed. So we have to address the needs of the students, but we also have to make sure that we put something out responsibly enough for it to pass this time. Anybody else?
So if I understand that correctly, so that's basically the recap from two BGNT meetings ago, the special meeting.
Yes.
So Applegoth, a new building at Applegoth is now right now off the table.
Well, no, it's not, it's eighty-two million dollars.
Oh, so it's off the. Eighty-four million.
Well, eighty-four million.
Oh, my. Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, let's talk to the public, they want to pass it, we'll, you know, we'll get.
It's actually a hundred and fifteen million total.
That's what all the additions on all the schools that we need.
Yeah, but, but the concern, Madam President, if I may, but the concern, I think Rupa asked the right question about what are we doing with Applegoth, is that that building is getting to its critical age of how.
You guys want to put up an eighty-four million dollar referendum, go ahead.
Legally, you could say this, is that we, we need to act on it at this point, one way or the other, yeah.
But we have that plan of the town offered the senior center, if it got to the point, which no one has said it's at that point, or that there's a date of the point where we would have to not educate students in that building and push them somewhere else.
Madam President?
Yes.
Mr. Gorski, do you recall at one of our BGNT meetings, Jerry Tagg had presented us with the cost analysis of everything that needed to be done in the district? And I believe the Applegoth boiler roof, whatever renovations needed to be done there, came to about thirty million dollars.
Madam?
Yes, Mr. Gorski.
Mr. Tofano, I do remember that meeting, and I, I could visualize very clearly the worksheet that he put together, and it said with Applegoth, to be determined. He was, if he was referencing those core facility items like the boiler, it, it's possible some of them came to that total.
Right.
But, but the whole point that Mr. Tagg made was, where do you draw the line in replacing systems in a school that is entirely beyond its useful life?
And the other major component to that was, the repairs that have to be done at Applegoth cannot be done while school is in session, because the ground has to be ripped up in the school to run the pipes for the boiler, the, the way the heating system is. So they would have to be removed. So the problem is, do we spend estimated thirty million dollars and close down that school for a year while we renovate it? Or do we spend eighty million dollars to build a new school, which will hold more students? That is what the discussion really should be. So the last referendum was, Mr. Gorski, do you remember?
About seventy-five million, seventy-six million, seventy.
Total referendum, last, the last referendum we had.
For both options, was about a hundred and fifty million?
Right, so now we have another referendum with the same kind of results, in my opinion, better than the last referendum, for a hundred and fifteen million dollars. So that's my take on that, we already reduced it forty million dollars from the first referendum, with construction costs probably tripling from the last referendum. So I think we are getting a lot more for our money. We were told for years that if we delay the referendums, they're going to be increased by far more money. We actually got this referendum cheaper with construction costs tripling.
It's not a referendum yet, but that's.
Well, I'm saying there's, there's a potential referendum. We're getting it with construction, with construction costs almost tripled, material, I should say, tripling, how many years later, and we're still getting everything for a hundred and fifteen, which is forty million dollars cheaper than the first money we asked for. So as far as it being expensive, everything's expensive. You, you can't even buy a steak without spending sixty dollars nowadays, but these things have to be done. The longer we wait, more kids are coming into the district, more expensive it's going to be. So in my opinion, I think, of course, there needs to be more discussion, and the board needs to come to a conclusion, and, and we need to put out a referendum immediately. Because the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to become, right? That's what we've been told.
Mr. Gorski first.
Mr. Tofano, I, I followed everything you said, and I, I agree with everything, but just one comparative difference. The last referendum for the high school piece was much more extensive than what is being proposed now. This is basically to take some steam out of the top of the pot.
Right, no, I, I wasn't, I, I, and I, I'm sorry if the public, or, or you misconstrued what I said, or misunderstood what I said, I should say. I understand that was a different project, but here we are trying to, like you said, let the steam out of the pot, and if we can get that steam out for a hundred and fifteen million dollars, and alleviate the stress of the students eating lunch for twenty minutes, I think that's what we need to do. And, and my opinion, I think a referendum for a hundred and fifteen, in my opinion, is reasonable in today's market, and it, it should be implemented.
Mr. Ruski?
So, just to make sure I understand, so Mr. Nick Katinsky said something, and it was a hundred and fifteen million for everything. So, and then now I'm hearing that for the high school part, it's not what was originally planned as far as an addition. So can I, what's, what's the piece that is the high school, is it trailers or the smaller addition, or?
There, there was a, I believe, a two-story structure going to be put on, on the side of the building where the culinary kitchen is. Now we're just going to do additions under the overhang there, where the columns are. I don't, I don't know.
I believe it was a, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thousand student addition to the high school before.
Right.
Uh, this is a, a few classrooms that we're talking about on the table now.
Eight, right, eight.
But still with the ability to build on.
That addition.
At, at a future date, again, trying to reduce the cost to get a referendum passed and to eliminate as much overcrowding as possible without going for another failed referendum. Because we, you know, we just can't have, we just can't have these fails.
The, the reality is.
Completely agree.
The reality is, we're not getting any relief from the state, we're not getting any relief from the township with the building, so we need to face that reality. The kids are not going to stop coming, we're going to have a lot of kids coming to this township with all the construction going on. We need to do something, and we need to do something immediately. Not, this is going on way too long, I've been on this board for three years, and for three years, I just keep seeing different people kick the can down the road, and we need to do something about it.
I, I would just take exception to that, we're, we're not kicking the can down the road.
Yeah, it is.
We are trying to establish a viable and, and.
And I don't mean that with malice, I don't mean you're kicking the can down the road with malice, or, or, or being mean, or not paying attention to it, but it's been delayed for far too long, and it needs to be addressed. It's a major, major, major problem in our school district right now.
Can I just, can I just extend my question?
And that'll be the end of this.
I promise, I promise, but the high school wise, so obviously referendums take time to put together, take times to get passed, take time to do the construction. Is there any discussion, we had talked about doing a trailer, or a few trailers on, at the high school here, before COVID. Is there any talk about quickly putting a trailer on to release some of the steam?
No, I think.
Go ahead and do the construction, or that's not?
I think we were talking about more, more permanent modules, not trailers.
Take longer, but make it more permanent.
Right, Mr. Tof, Mr. Pelori?
Yeah, thank you, very quickly, I just don't want people to be misled. Uh, I'm one of those guys, Peter, that I said that at, with the time, the cost goes up, and it does go up, I stand by that statement. I don't think we're comparing same two projects here, the project's scope has changed completely. Uh, and I certainly hope it's a hundred and fifteen million for the sake of our kids, that the school would be built, but something that we need to look at to make sure that the, the costs are correct. One of the things that are happening right now is that we do put in a lot of contingencies, which I questioned Jerry Tagg right from the get-go. Those contingencies have to be reasonable, so that, you know, we can pass a referendum, so we're all on the same page, but we need to compare apples to apples.
Again, I'm starting to get an agenda for our next special meeting, so I already have three things. So can we move on, are we done here with this? Because nothing's going to get established tonight. Okay, I am going to open up the.
Finance, finance.
Still, what do we have?
Finance, one more committee.
Okay, come on. Mr. Chiarelli? Wake up. Mr. Chiarelli, are you there, sir?
I am here.
May I ask you for your finance report?
Yes, you may.
Will you give it, yeah?
What's that?
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We had three topics at the finance meeting on September fourteenth. So no, the first one was Kitty Corral, we have to change that in the minutes, or in the, on the agenda, on the committee meeting notes, and on the agenda item, because it says Kitty Academy. Uh, we had non-public school requests from Kitty Corral for various goods and services. So the thing with this is that the way this works is that the, the, uh, public, or non-public, I'm sorry, non-public schools are allowed to ask for funding or financing from the state. non-public schools are allowed to ask for funding or financing from the state. If they're approved, that funding or financing then goes to the school district. The school district then is mandated to do a couple of things. So once it's approved, they have to hold a meeting with that non-public entity, develop an agreement of the, for the procurement of goods and services for the amount awarded by the state, and then have it approved by the Board by resolution. And that's going to, we're going to approve that later today, or tomorrow at this point. By the, and then that has to be done by the end of October and complete the final report in the state, the New Jersey State Home Room. So the thing that you know about this, because I think there was some confusion, because we were told that this was actually district funds, and it was reducing our aid. That turned out not to be the case. What was actually the case is that once they are approved, that money comes to the district, and the district does the procurement, comes up with the solution with the agreement with the entity, and then gets the goods and services. So in this case, for security aid, they were awarded two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars, textbook aid, nine hundred dollars, nursing service aid, sixteen hundred and eighty dollars, and technology aid was six hundred and thirty dollars. From what I understand, when, if that aid is not used by the non-public school entity, then that money goes back to the state, so it doesn't reside in our budget. The other, the other two things that we discussed was action of the district transportation equipment through Gov deals. So we're going to liquidate, or auction off eight buses ranging from two thousand five to two thousand eight. They've been taken out of service for a while, they're beyond their useful life, and oh, you know, the processes that our mechanics first cannibalized those, and then we put those up for auction in the past. We've been able to get some decent amount of money for, you know, old rusted-out hulls and things like that, buses without seats, those kind of things. So that resolution will be forthcoming also. And then the last thing that we discussed was preliminary excess surplus calculation and unassigned fund balance. So Mr. Gorsky handed out the excess fund surplus calculation, scheduled in draft form, and this has been audited by Holman, Brenia, and Allison PC. Mr. Gorsky presented that excess surplus calculation for the year ending six thirty twenty-one, and that is five million forty thousand and one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which is right now on par with last year, which was five million one hundred and seventy-seven, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. And Mr. Gorsky advised the committee that the twenty twenty-one excess surplus figure will recycle as revenue through the twenty-two twenty-three budget. That's it. Any questions?
Mr. Chiarela, I just have one question. So the money that the state is essentially awarding to their non-public school entity is not and was never in our budget to begin with? If we are just a facilitator for that, is that correct?
That's the way I read it. You know, Mr. Gorsky may say things in another way, but from what we were told, it was, it's actually not. It is, technically, it's our money once it's given to us. We can't just write a check to that non-public entity and say, here's, you know, here's five thousand dollars, for example. We have to go through that procurement process and come up with how they would use it and put all of that together. But that's money allocated from the state to our budget to then be allocated to that non-public entity. And then that money, if it's not used, if we can't come to an agreement, or we don't use all of it, then that, then those dollars have to go back to the state, from what I understand.
When you say we don't use all of it, you mean our school district or the non-public school entity?
The non-public, yeah, the non-public school entity.
They appeal to the state for use of funds, essentially?
They appeal to the state, and the state has some strict criteria. So the only one that we, that I know of, that the finance committee knows of, was this, was Kitty Corral, who had applied for it and then was approved.
Mr. Gorsky, do you want to speak to that?
Very briefly, Madam, the only thing I would say is there's two topics at hand here. There's non-public transportation aid that the district does receive an award every year. We pick it up through an adjustment to the budget. The district does keep that money. If we don't spend it on non-public schools' transportation, we have over time. This is a new endeavor now where we have a registered non-public school in Monroe Township that is requesting four different categories of goods and services through aid that we are the recipient of, and we have to spend on their behalf. And Mr. Chiarela is correct. If we do not come to an accord on how to spend the money on their behalf, or they don't need it, it does go back to the state. And the resolution tonight is to accept the revenue portion of it, as I have not come to a complete agreement on the four different types of spending plans yet with Kitty Corral.
But they are the ones requesting the funds and the amounts of funds as we're, as, from the state?
Yes.
Okay, we're not providing a lump sum fund. They're asking for certain things. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Anyone else? Ms. Gerby?
Yeah, Michelle. So there was some very negative things put out on social media after the finance committee meeting.
All right.
So I did, I just.
Very quickly.
Yes, I, after this non-public school funding was presented, and it sounded like it was coming out of our aid, I did reach out to the Department of Education, the gentleman who's in charge of this, and if I could just read what he wrote.
Go ahead.
Non-public school funding is based on the registered non-public schools enrollment count for the previous year. So for the year, fiscal year twenty-three, the funds are based on the non-public schools' October fifteenth, twenty twenty, K through twelve enrollment. Non-public schools must complete the non-public school enrollment report each year to be eligible for funds. All non-public funds go to the school district where the non-public school is located. The school district in turn must provide the services to the eligible non-public school students. No funds actually go to the non-public schools. So you are correct that technically the funds are the district's, but it can only be spent on the non-public services. Any remaining state funds must be returned to the state after the end of that fiscal year. Only school districts that have non-public schools located within their boundaries receive these funds, and only if the non-public school requests these funds through the non-public school enrollment report. So I just want to be clear that this is not funding that we were receiving from the state. We are not voting to give away our funding that we can spend on our students. This is something that they pursued with the state of New Jersey, Department of Education. This is specifically money that can only be spent on non-public schools, and if it's not spent, it needs to be returned. We cannot spend it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Polari.
Very quickly, I just wanted to bring to Ken's committee, as well as to our business administrator, that the one-point-three-trillion-dollar Jobs Act or the Family Act, whatever you want to call it, already passed to Congress. It's going to the Senate bill. There's quite a substantial amount of money that's going to be allocated for the schools as well. Whatever we need to do to position ourselves to get as much of the pie as possible, please make sure that, you know, we're positioned to do that. It may come out in a month, most likely by October thirtieth.
We can talk about that under new business. Okay. Anyone else? All right, seeing none for sure. Anybody? No other committees? Let us open to the public forum. Let me just remind the public that as of August eighteenth of twenty twenty-one, our new policy, again, I will reiterate that we have four minutes for the public to speak. And again, I would like you to remain at the podium during your uninterrupted four minutes, and that is our new policy. And please, if you have any questions, you'll address me as the presiding officer, as the chair and president of the board, and then I will have whoever needs to answer that question answered. So please address me, and if there, you know, let's try that. We, again, we want to have a civil discussion and everybody to be able to express themselves, so. What?
Agenda only.
Yes. And on this occasion of the public forum, it is agenda items only. Yes.
Good evening. Betty Sabarito to Barrymore Drive. I just wanted to ask some questions and hope that you consider some of the commentary with regard to home instruction versus logging in remotely. I guess my first question is, the home instruction piece, are subs, so to speak, that would go in and provide this instruction to the students, or it's their actual teacher?
Dr. Alvik, could I ask a bit?
How are we doing this? Do you want to stop?
Well, okay.
Are we stopping the clock?
Yep.
Okay. No, these are, these are actual teachers in our district that have signed up to do the virtual home instruction. So we would like it to be the homeroom teacher, but it may not be if the homeroom teacher is not interested in doing it.
Okay, so that, that's a concern, I think, especially for the elementary school students, and most especially our special education students, because it was hard to engage them last year remotely, and I understand that home instructions will be virtual. It will not be in person. So that's the piece that I think is concerning, that it'll be a different teaching style. These children, especially, again, the little ones and special education will have to pair with this teacher, so I'm not sure how efficient that would be, and that's why, on a personal note, I would prefer the logging into the classroom, which I understand is going to be very challenging for the teachers. They've had quite a year, and, you know, all our educators deserve a lot of kudos for the year that they've had, but I think we also have to keep in mind that we were doing students logging into their classrooms, and towards the end of last school year, some schools had half-and-half students, some had most remote, and some in person, some vice versa. So we do have the capacity to do this. And I personally believe that if we could do this right away, because these children have had so much learning loss already, as opposed to waiting the twenty-four or forty-eight hours, so if you guys could just consider that commentary, again, for the high school and middle school as well, but especially elementary and special education, to work with a teacher remotely that they don't know, I'm not sure how effective that instruction would be for them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. Yes, please say your name and address for our records. And would you like us to stop the clock and answer the questions, or would you like to get all your questions done, and then we'll answer them?
All my questions done. In fact, I want to make some statements.
Yes, yes. Thanks, go ahead.
My name is Mary Lutha. I'm from ninety-one Morgan Way in Monroe Township. I want to say that we have excellent and really good policies and plans for their school reopening on paper, but my concern is how many of them are being implemented. And my major concern is with the most important plan, which is to, that stood, and it states in your, on the website, in the reopening plan, that all students will be required to wash their hands with soap and water periodically, especially before lunch, and after using the bathroom, and after sneezing, and et cetera. But where is it being applied? My first grade daughter went to school. She, this is the first time she stepped into the school this year, after remote learning in kindergarten. She was not told where to go, what to do, and she and her classmates go for recess, they use the playground equipment, and they come directly for lunch. There is no opportunity for them to wash their hands with soap and water, which we know is much better than using a sanitizer. There is a sanitizer available, but there was nobody to guide her. There was none on her table, so she spent three days eating her lunch with unsanitized hands, as a result of which, she came back, and from since last Friday, she's not gone to school, because she had cold, severe cold, and watery eyes and everything. And according to the COVID checklist, which we have to sign every morning, it says if your child has any of these things, please don't send them to school. So my daughter has not attended school, not because she's quarantined, but because she's having cold, because of the policies not being implemented. And she, again, is just sitting there for the past six days, just sitting. She's just got a cold, that's it. But she cannot even go to school, because with all her mask and all, she's so small, she cannot blow her nose or do proper sanitization. So that's one point. The second one is, you're, again, the plans say that wherever possible, if children will be made to sit separately, and if it's not possible, there will be barricades or Plexigord, oh, sorry, Plexi, the glass. And my son, who's in the trailer, he sits so close to a desk that when he has to open his binder, his hands and arms touch the student beside him. The Plexi glass is available in the rooms, but they are not put on. Why? Except in the cafeteria. When the Plexi glass is available, why don't you use it? Why is it not being enforced? That is my second. The third is, as much as I am for masking, I really am for masking. I like the idea that you should mask, but this masking is not working for my kids, or even for me. When I put my mask on, I'm not able to, you know, relate properly. I have to wear my glasses, so does my son. And he's a very good student, but he cannot function properly in the daily classroom. So that is a big problem for us, because he's not able to function properly with the mask, with the glasses, the glasses fogging up, not being, and there is no, yesterday, he went to the cafeteria, the bathroom, there was no soap even for him. There was no soap. So this is the condition, and after listening to all your discussions, I have come to the conclusion that there is, you're really, we are not prepared. We are not prepared, and for you, you might take children as percentages and say only, oh, one percent, point one percent, or only two children are infected. But for me and for parents, they are children. Each child is precious. So we cannot just throw our children like this and go through this stress, and I'm speaking on behalf of many parents who have not been able to come here today. We are stressed every day. When we send our, the day my daughter came and she was having the cold, none of you were there. None of you are going to help me. It was only the grace of God and my prayers, and really, whatever. It is really God's grace that she is fine. So all, and when some parents have written to you saying that our child has been quarantined, we just get a letter saying, oh, we are very sorry to know that your child is quarantined. That is not acceptable.
Okay, thank you. And your time is up. We're going to try to address those.
I don't, which school is your daughter in? You didn't mention?
Oak Tree.
Okay. I'll take your concerns back. Have you reached out to the building administration?
No, I did not.
Because, because a couple of those things could be addressed.
I wrote to the teacher saying that, can you please tell me how the children are supposed to wash their hands after lunch, because they go to the recess and use the playground? She said, no, they're supposed to use a sanitizer.
Okay, so what, you're saying that there's a discrepancy between what's.
There is no, there is, it's not a matter of discrepancy. There's a matter of not, the things not being implemented, and there is no preparation, as we can see, because everything is challenging. Nothing is prepared. And I'm talking about every child. For me, my child is important. For you, your child is important. And I'm talking on behalf of every child. And we all know that every child reacts and behaves in a different way.
Okay. All right, and.
For some people, so that's what my, my request is. No, I just want to tell you my.
No, you're repeating it, and.
No, I just have one request.
Go ahead, very quick.
My request is, since each child is different, and there are many parents, please give us the virtual option who want it, or think out of the box and do something else, but let us not go through this stress every day.
Okay, thank you.
So what is my answer now?
Well, your answer is.
I have to take it back to the schools, because I'm.
That is only one point. What about the others? What about the fact that?
The masking and the virtual option are not something that the district can change, that those are executive orders that we have to follow.
So what about the safety of the children?
That's why we have the masks in place, and that's why we're doing.
But still, things are happening.
Ma'am, we have to give the next person a chance. We have taken.
But I didn't get my answer.
We won't, we may not be able to answer to your satisfaction, what we're going to do.
It's not about my satisfaction. I'm sorry to say that, but can you, can you even, can you even tell me that you can think about some options?
Wings are. Please, well, I'm going to have to ask you to take your seat.
You all took your time to talk, all this time till nine-thirty.
And the rest of the public is going to speak as well.
I know that.
We have taken notes on it, and we're going to try to resolve it. I get, I get it. But your time is up. So we're going to try to stay strictly to our four minutes, and we've given you time.
You're supposed to represent us.
We are, thank you.
Hi, Katie Fabiano, nineteen Patricia Place. I have to say that I'm sad for our children. I'm sad for our students. The virtual home instruction option clearly is not working. The fact that there are students that have gone at least seven days without any type of instruction is completely unacceptable. Per an email that I just, a conversation that I had had with Dr. Alvik earlier in the week, as of Monday, I was under the impression that we had enough home instructors to cover our needs. However, it seems that if students are seven days into what is their quarantine period, and we don't have home instructors for them, then do we not have enough? And that number is only going to increase. If I, if I may, I am a teacher in a neighboring district, so I would like to share what our plan is for students who are in quarantine, if that's allowed.
You have your four minutes.
So for me, we are targeting instruction for students who have to quarantine, so they will not be on the computer for the entire school day. So if I want to meet with a student during math for that particular math lesson, I would ask them to come on to the computer during our math period, so that I could work with them in a small group setting to target their math. If I want them to log on for reading, I would ask them to log on for reading instruction, so that I could work with them in a small group, or even one-on-one for independent reading time. We're not looking to have them on the computer all day. That doesn't help anybody. Doesn't help the teacher, it doesn't help the student, but what we're doing is targeting instruction and still having that child be a part of the classroom. So I don't know if that's an option. So I don't know if that's an option, if that's something that you can consider. I know that, like you said, teachers don't want to have two jobs. I certainly do not want to repeat hybrid instruction again. But I have to do what's best for my students first and foremost, and it's working for them. And we're able to transition from in-school instruction to home instruction in less than 24 hours. We're not waiting seven days. Thank you.
Hi, Kate Ratner, 2 Kings Court. My first question, and I would like if I can ask the question and then receive the answer with the time stopped, if that's okay, just to make things easier. Is there a reason why teachers are unable to just stream the classes right now? Just streaming, no interaction. Is there, I guess, a teachers' union issue with that or something of those sorts? Because to me, it seems like while things are at least getting set up, that's at least something that the student can view in the meantime.
Is there a privacy issue, Dr. Alvik, with Dr. Lehman about streaming?
No, there's not. And because it wasn't, it wasn't the direction we were going in. We were going in the direction of virtual home instruction. So rather than do both, we were, we were moving in the direction of, the direction of virtual.
Okay. Yeah, I just figure that's, that's an easy thing to do if you're not requiring the teachers to, you know, interact with that student. And, you know, obviously, hopefully, the home instruction will get to where it needs to be soon. But at least in that point, teachers can teach and a student can watch. I think that there were a number of home instructors that were or will be approved today. But if there is, you know, a lack of home instructors available, has there been anyone looking into maybe outside agencies that can do home instruction if we're understaffed for that?
There's not a lack of teachers. It was the timing of getting it in place.
Okay.
We have, right, even right now, we have 74 students around home instruction. We have over that. I don't even know what the number is of the teachers that were approved last month and this month.
Okay. Moving on to something kind of separate. With the mask wearing, you know, I think we all want kids safe. I really don't think anybody does not want children safe. I mean, I really hope not. You know, I do think it's crazy that if I take my child to Hershey Park, that's fine and they can come back to school the next day. But if I go to visit, you know, a relative's home in Maryland, she has to stay home for a week, even if we don't go anywhere. But I realize that is where we are right now. I guess my question in regards to mask wearing is, if a child is not wearing a mask due to medical concerns, are they being allowed in school or are they home?
They have to go through the nurse's office. And if it's a documented medical need that's approved by the, coming from a physician, going through our physician, then they are allowed to come to school.
Okay. If that's the case, are those students being socially distanced further than those students wearing masks? I guess my concern is, from what I've been told, the mask protects the people around you and not necessarily, you know, yourself. So if my daughter, let's say, is sitting next to a student who's not wearing a mask due to a medical concern, then my daughter's at risk because that child's not wearing a mask. And then it kind of puts the whole reason for wearing the mask to, you know, to the side. So is there anything that's being done to help keep, you know, those children safe as well?
Social distancing.
Okay. And I guess just my, my last thing was kind of just in terms of building and grounds. I know that there was the, moving the sixth grade down to the elementary school potential. When I was teaching for 10 years, five years, we had K to 5. And then in the sixth year, they had to move the sixth grade down to the elementary school, kind of for the same reasons, facing concerns. They, there were a lot of issues that came with that. Curricular, co-curricular issues, but also a lot of behavior management issues. So there were additional resources that were needed to take care of those. I don't even have a teenager yet or a tween yet, she's getting there. But I taught several of them and, you know, there's obviously a lot more behavior management issues that can come along with that. So that's just something I wanted to say. And then I also just wanted to know if there have been like community-based schools looked into, like K to 5 schools instead. I know that a lot of districts do K to 5 or K to 6. My mom teaches in Elizabeth. They're K to 8. And I just feel like there's less transition, so the kids get used to the teachers, the staff, the administration. And it's also less strain on busing because the kids live closer to the school. And it just creates more of a family environment. I'm not really sure how much it would help in terms of, you know, space. But I was just wondering if that's something that has been considered.
It's been considered. It's been discussed at multiple ad hoc committee meetings. I mean, I've been in the district for 18 years and I've heard it at a lot of ad hoc committee meetings in the past. I know the community has wanted the sister schools and we've done that. It would require some changes to some of our schools because there are different requirements for kindergarten classrooms versus upper-grade classrooms.
Right.
So, but it's something, if the board could consider that, but it has been discussed in the past.
Okay. I just also know busing sometimes is a concern, so that might take the strain off there just a bit. I think that's all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Krishna from 92 Morgan Way.
Your last name, sir?
Krishna Ramasamy.
Do you need, do you need spelling?
Yeah, I want to talk about the motion that's about to come up. So I feel the same way as the previous person. We should have the streaming for quarantined students as well as the instructions. Because streaming, they could watch until they, you know, get to the instructions. I just wanted to express my view on it. Secondly, you mentioned about some executive order. But I hear, you know, some school nearby, Robbinsville, looks like they went hybrid or, you know, they did some virtual. So I don't know based on what executive order they went. So now I would like to hear about it, like, you know, why it's possible for one township and not for Monroe.
To go into hybrid is your question?
Who's the district?
Yeah, hybrid or virtual. I heard that the Robbinsville school...
Robbinsville is not hybrid. Robbinsville, I actually live in Robbinsville. The elementary school in Robbinsville is still in person. The high school had three separate, I think it was three separate outbreaks. So they've gone to virtual school for a week. All students are virtual. It is not a hybrid option and it is only a short term because of the outbreaks.
Okay, thanks on that. How about, like, you know, what if there's a major outbreak in our township? Like, what's the plan? How will that be addressed?
We would have to do the exact same thing that Robbinsville's doing.
Yeah, we'll be prepared because I see that, you know, we don't seem to be prepared for even the quarantined students. So, you know, however, like, you know, do we have a plan in place? Are we prepared? Or is that going to take four data, such as 72, as whatever, you know? Are we prepared to do it right away or is there...
It would just move directly. The teachers would be teaching virtually instead of in their classroom.
Okay, thank you.
And it would follow the same schedules as what we're following now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Shama, 15 Edward Avenue.
Could you get a little closer?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Sarah Shama, 15 Edward Avenue. I have a son in Woodland and a son in the middle school, it's sixth grade. They've had a fantastic experience coming back to school. They're thrilled and they're thriving and they're doing great. My concerns have to do with the quarantining. So we have a neighbor, unfortunately, Tuesday of last week, four days into school, she gets the call that her kid was exposed at lunch and there's been no instruction ever since. So I followed up with her before I came to the meeting, because she can't be here to represent herself, to find out, has she had any instruction? Unfortunately, up until this point, she has not had any virtual instruction at home. It's been all assignments over Google Classroom and there has been no teacher contact. So this is my concern and I think that the motion that was brought to the table was a really good one, that you should be considering something to let the children go live right away. So I'm sorry, you get the call, you're, you know, and it's going to happen to all of us at some point. Your kid has been exposed, they need to stay home. Okay, but by the next morning, they should be able to log into their classroom and stay abreast of what's happening. And I think that if you can do that up until the first, you know, 72, 48 hours, whatever it is, until you can get the home instruction in place, would be a good service to our children. You know, it's one thing that, you know, and I do agree with you, the one-on-one contact is definitely a better option for the two hours than them sitting in front of the screen for six without the contact. But they have to have something up until that point. So if you could really reconsider that motion of you can go remote and listen in until your home instruction is set up, hopefully within the 48-hour window. And if that could be the motion, I think that that would be a successful one. My other, you know, issue that I wanted to bring to the table was also the travel that Ms. Skerby brought up earlier. I'll be honest with you, we intend to go to Mexico the week, the first week of November. Now I'm reconsidering it because I don't know about what's going to happen when my kids come back. So, you know, international travel, you know, forces you to take a test three days before you come back into the United States. So as long as my test is negative, I'm allowed to board the plane and come home. So what is the concern if I'm traveling internationally and I'm allowed to get on that plane and come home? Is it, are you worried that I'm going to pick something up in Newark by the time I get my luggage and come back to my house? That they can't come to school on Monday? So that is definitely something that I am concerned about and would like a better resolution to. I know you said some towns are not quarantining at all post-travel. I'll be honest, also, we were away right before school started. I didn't know anything about the travel quarantine, you know? But my kids started school the first day. They, we were home one week later. Thankfully, we were fine. We were traveling in the South. But it wasn't a big deal. We were fine. We masked the whole time and there was no issue. So I think that's stuff that needs to be considered so that you're not getting this large group of children who are going to be quarantined because a lot of us do vacation that week of November, when you have the teacher days off. So I do think that that should be readdressed and thought of some other way that may be satisfactory to all the parents and the students to make sure that they are continuing their education and that we're not getting that regress that we had. That's it, thank you.
Next, please.
Hi, Jeremy Marcus, 27 McFadden. So thank you for allowing me to speak again for the third time in four months. My simple wish of turning the clock back to 2019 is not hap...
Could you use your microphone a little bit, go a little slower?
So just some background on me. I'm a buyer for my business. I employ 15 people. It's my job to see and identify trends in products and capitalize on them. I did it for years before, prior to my current business in the financial world. So if I'm really good, you know, I see things and we do really well. So paradigm shift that I saw happening last June, I told whomever would listen that the NJEA was going to collapse the government schools in New Jersey, and it's happening quicker. There are pods and co-ops opening up everywhere, all over the state. There are active fund-the-student-not-the-system pieces of legislation in close to 30 states. Today, Congressman Dan Bishop introduced two bills allowing families to take their federal education dollars somewhere else if their government school advances critical race theory or mandates masks. So you see, the UFT was dictating a CDC school masking policy last February. And just this past month, it was reported that the NEA, which is the parent of the NJEA, has been doing the same. So I can guarantee you a million percent that every executive order that's come out of Trenton has been run by the NJEA. According to a recent poll on NJ.com, 67% of parents support masking, yet only 43% support the mandated jabs. So how do you think this ends? Every parent has their line, right? For some, it's the mask and they've pulled and they homeschool and they're doing their thing. For some, it's the 10 or 14-day quarantine and we've heard plenty about that tonight. And for most of us, it's the jab. So you can spend all this time talking about, you know, iPad rental fees and referendums. Doesn't matter. Because if 43% of parents, only 43% support the jabs, they're going to pull their kids. And they're going to eat the tax dollars, they're going to do homeschooling, there's so much curriculum online, it's everywhere. And then they're going to move to Florida, they're going to move to South Carolina, move to Georgia or Texas or Tennessee. So you mentioned earlier that there's 184, I guess Monroe employees or teachers or whatever it is who are unvaccinated at this point. Is that, was that the right number? So I looked on Wikipedia, there's about 530 total full-time employees. There might be more, you know, more or less, but that's from a couple of years ago. That's a big number. So what if 5% call out on October 18th?
There's actually 1,500 employees in our district that this executive order affects.
Okay, so you're looking at, I mean, about 15%? Okay, it's a big number, right? So if 5% call out, like the NYPD has the blue flu, right? They all call out, they're, you know, negotiating tactics. You know, what if they call out on October 18th, Monday morning? The districts, you know, have to go remote instantly, right? What if they don't want to be tested? What if they don't want their unvaccinated colleagues to be forced into something, knowing that they may be forced into something in the future, right? It's a very, very slippery slope we're going down here. So according to a recent magazine article I read, year-over-year government school enrollment is down 3% nationwide. Pre-K and kindergarten enrollment in schools is down 13%. The Catholic schools were shutting their doors two years ago, now they're turning kids away, right? 13% is a big number. So once these parents find that these pods and co-ops and homeschooling, not as challenging as they may have anticipated, this, the funding that we get, it just goes away. It gets less and less every year. So there's paradigm shifts, they happen slowly and then they happen all at once. So years ago, they used to be sold these department stores and now everything is on Amazon. And you can't even go to a mall because they're all closed. And how did it happen? Nobody really remembers. It just happened. So the time for voting and petitions and letters and begging for freedom for our kids is done. So the only way to get out of this, because they're going to continue to push the masks and the vaccines and the endless boosters and the swab testing, they're going to push this forever. This is never going to end. So just, you know, some background. 1930, Mahatma Gandhi led 78 people on a 240-mile march to the Arabian Sea to collect salt. British made it illegal and very expensive for Indians to own. He was joined along the way by 30,000 people. So this peaceful and nonviolent act of civil disobedience started the collapse of the British Empire. 17 years later, India was independent. 1955, a Montgomery schoolgirl refused to give up her seat on a city bus to a white woman. She was arrested and thrown in an adult jail. Rosa Parks was a much bigger deal, but it happened nine months later. So that all led to the Civil Rights Act in 1964 and overturning all the Jim Crow laws. So our teachers have taught and celebrated these people.
Mr. Marcus, your time is up. Can you just finish your statement? Right, how, not another, not another page, just the end of that page that you have.
No problem. So if your kid is uncomfortable wearing the mask, right, it's just one kid. They can stop you, they can stop 10, they cannot stop 100 and they certainly cannot stop 1,000. The only way out of this is a critical mass of non-compliance. Civil disobedience has always been the only way out. The masks do nothing, we know this.
Thank you very much.
The jabs do nothing, they know this also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, was any...
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but you guys took so long with all that other business, I jotted a few things down.
Let's find your name and address, please, sir.
It's coming, it's coming.
Okay, we're waiting, we're waiting.
Okay, I'll keep you waiting no longer. Tom Motard, 668 Spotswood English Town Road. Monroe, obviously.
Go ahead.
I'll be right with you. Okay, so I'm sorry, last month's meeting, I might have slipped and said the S-word here or there. Please understand, I'm passionate about this, as everyone should be with our children. So much so that unlike, as I expressed last time, I don't study this topic on CNN or any propaganda network on the tele-live vision. They're called programs for a reason. But rather, I watch interviews and read data from actual scientists, biologists, virologists, some Nobel Prize winners, I might add. Not to mention whistleblowers from Big Pharma, from Big Pharma and hospitals too. Raised by a pharmacist and a pharmacy owner, I grasp what I take in rather naturally. People are awake. When will we be? Asymptomatic spread is untrue. Thus, no symptoms, no spreading. This like touches on the whole quarantine stuff. I don't want to use that S-word again. The PCR test, which built the scary fear cases that have created the circus we're living in, the inventor himself, as well as the CDC, now gets that they can be easily manipulated. And to the, to the point that they're discontinuing them in January, if you didn't know that yet, they, like I say, quietly admit stuff. They are so manipulated, you know, that, to the point where 94 to 97% of all cases were false positives. Meaning you're, you're going to start tracking and tracing kids, let's look down the road real quick. Like, like someone just said here, their kid had to leave because they were around someone. Bogus. Lockdowns are for criminal inmates. Quarantines are for sick people. Masks are for Halloween. By the way, has anyone here looked into how COVID even affects children, even young adults? I'll give you a hint. It barely does. If we can't handle this and see it for what it is, the masks and all this crap, how are we going to deal with next month or whenever politics and government have us debating the M-N-R-N-A shot? Notice I didn't say vaccine because by definition, it is not. Unless you go by the new definition they made up for this very rollout, kind of like they did with herd immunity. Now literally, they say it only occurs when the masses take... Now literally, they say it only occurs when the masses take the experiment. With that, I'm going to wish you a good night. I didn't eat dinner tonight. I wanted to see what was going on. It looks like same old, same old here.
Would you like the mic wiped since people are taking off their masks?
I'm, I'm fine.
You're fine with it?
Yes. My name is Jennifer Edelman. I live at 48 Cherry Blossom. I just have a question first. With the quarantine for travel, are children that quarantine due to travel also allowed to get the home instruction right now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, my concern with that is from hearing everything that was said tonight, like, a lot of people spoke about that first week in November. I, hundreds of children are going to be out that week in November for travel. If we're already having issues with being able to get the home instruction implemented right now with, you know, just a few days into school without really a travel becoming an issue into that, how is that, you know, is the district going to be able to handle the amount of children that are going to come back that second and third week in November? Or in December when there's hundreds of students out, you know, for travel? If we're already having issues with it now, being able to get these children instruction, when we start getting inundated with the travel students as well as the COVID students out for quarantine, I really don't, you know, I would like to just know that there is a plan in place and that these children are going to get home instruction or some type of instruction. I really think it's going to become overwhelming. Thank you.
I, I just have a question then, perhaps. We, we, no, not for, but thank you, thank you. Perhaps, and I don't know that we've ever done this before because it's a private issue, but if, if the public is saying that we think that there's going to be a lot of travel, maybe we should ask the parents to register with us that they will be traveling out and so we can have an idea. Because it really is, they do.
Yeah, that is part of it. We do ask for them to let us know because they're going to be absent.
Okay, so, oh, the children will be absent, but, but we don't know, we don't know if they're traveling out of state or-
They usually report that to the, to the school.
Okay, so then we would have some idea of how many children will be quarantined when they, when they come back. Okay, thank you for that information.
Gazala Bora, one me could ride. I want to start by addressing the virtual instruction issue because there's a table motion right now. And I'm not asking questions, I don't need answers. I just wanted to say that I'm grateful my kids are back. All three of them are back in school and they're having a normal experience. But we are all sitting ducks. We knew going in that there was a possibility of five kids getting exposed, there was a possibility of hundreds of kids getting exposed. We did not plan right. We did not plan right because I, and I'm saying that because I personally know of three children who've been quarantined either due to exposure in school or exposure out of school, who've not had any virtual instruction. But worse than that, and any virtual instruction for over five days, some have not had anything for seven days. These are both elementary and middle school children. And that's not the worst part of it. Worst part of it is that the staff and the school administration are all giving mixed signals. So we don't have a protocol in place where, once that exposure has happened and the child has been sent back to school or the school has called and informed, within 24 hours, there should be a detailed letter to the parents telling them what to expect. Why are parents chasing after teachers and administrators to find out what is going to happen? When our administration has said we have enough virtual instructors at this time. There is an email from Dr. Alveig from September 20th that, to a parent, saying that they have enough virtual instructors, yet there are kids who've not had instruction for seven days. I understand that every grade level leads to a different kind of an instructor, but we had enough time over summer to prepare for this, and we did not. And that's my comment as a public, that because we didn't do the due diligence and there is a chance, a possibility still very real, that a lot of kids could be out due to exposure, I think it's only fair that we make the remote option available to the parents as soon as the kids are sent out due to exposure. My second comment, again, I'm not looking for answers, and this comment is, because we have selective memories, and I have stood at this forum plenty of times, and I've sat at student growth advisory committees, ad hoc committees, where I've been lied to plenty of times, I want to say something, very sadly, as a taxpayer. Four years ago, I said our high schools are overcrowded, five years ago. And we're not being able to offer our children the classes they need. I was told I'm lying. Today, not today, sorry, last week, a curriculum supervisor said that when Mr. Pelleri asked her about a class that we should be taking, a very, you know, it was a very good suggestion. And at that, the discussion started, and she said, "We could offer a lot more classes if we had the room." But that's not even about offering additional classes. My freshman was, was not able, and not just him, there was a huge chunk of freshman children that were not offered AP Computer Science principal, which, believe me, in today's world, we should be able to offer that to every student who wants that class. But a majority of freshman class was not offered that. Why? Because we don't have the space for it. Or we don't have the teachers for it. Well, whatever reason, we, whatever I was saying four years ago, my child is now facing that. And I wasn't at that time talking for my child, I was talking for children who were in high school at that time. And also, in September 2016, we should have been discussing whether the middle school can be extended, whether we can put those eight classrooms in the cafeteria and whether we can put a cafeteria in the back. But in September 2016, we were told, very adamantly, Mr. Gorski did that, Mr. Tag did that, middle school cannot be extended. So we're going to put a $68 million referendum out there because this just cannot be extended. We could, I know of so many people who stood here and gave creative ideas about expanding the middle school, who were told, "Sorry, it is not possible." We were lied to. And I want people to remember that, that now when we plan this, we have to do the due diligence as a board. And I thank the board for asking these tough questions in the last meeting so that we actually heard here in this room that yes, middle school can be expanded.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. The administration of this district honestly should thank God that they don't work in public, in a public company. Because the security here would be walking you out, and your admins would be packing up your boxes and sending them in the mail. I think the one, the one person here in the public who said, spoke and said it perfectly is, you have a plan on paper and you failed to execute. Our kids are sitting at home not being educated because they're being forced to quarantine because this district refuses to follow the New Jersey Department of Health guidelines like most other districts around us are following. Why are we following the CDC guidelines when we should be following the Department of Health guidelines, just like our neighboring districts? I'll stop there, pause the time, and I'd like an answer.
Dr. Alveig?
As I read earlier, the New Jersey Department of Education, the Department of Health, New Jersey Department of Health Guidelines, New Jersey restrictions, says to follow the CDC recommendations.
Okay, so the, start the clock. So the model school district that the governor came out and did his reopening speech in East Brunswick, who is following the Department of Health's guidelines, they're wrong? Stop the clock.
I don't know. I'm, I'm, I told you that, that's, that's the reason we're following the CDC guidelines is because that's what's on the state website and says we should follow.
Start the clock. Are we allowed to follow the Department of Health's guidelines? Stop the clock.
The Department of Health's guidelines are saying to, are recommending to follow the CDC guidelines.
Start the clock. The Department of Health's guidelines clearly don't have any quarantine guidelines for travel, for instance. So our neighboring districts, I'll use East Brunswick again as an example, kids can travel domestically, they can travel internationally, they can come back to school as soon as they come back. So are they wrong?
I'm not going to speak about another district.
Got it. So what I would employ the board to do here is to bring a motion to the table to follow the Department of Health's guidelines, not the CDC guidelines. And clearly, many other districts around us are doing it, many who are way farther ahead of us, not only in our reopening plans, but have much older buildings than ours that aren't falling down, that have been able to be maintained, that have education and scores that are surpassing ours. But we magically have all of the answers, always. And I guess we can't confer, even though we hear it here time after time, that you meet with the superintendent, the county superintendent, and we talk to other districts, but time and time again, we go off on our own path, which honestly seems to be failing. When it comes to the motion brought to the table tonight, I think it makes sense. We need to have kids immediately, if they're going to be forced to quarantine, immediately be able to view their classes. The sad reality is, I don't think we can go any, any further than that in terms of having any interactions because the, the simple fact is, we failed to deliver a simple plan to have kids have remote instruction in 48 hours. So if you're looking to go anything more complex than that, it would be a miracle. A miracle that would probably lift us all out of our seats here when I tap this desk to be able to make that happen. So if you think that's going to happen, I would not bring any motion, any complex motion to the table because this administration does not have the ability to deliver it. Time and time again, we sit here and the administration is, is surprised by what the parents bring and what the community members bring. They don't understand what's going on. So I like the motion, the kids should be able to go in immediately when they're quarantined to be able to see the class, but I think if you get too complex, kids are not going to get an education at all. Finally, my last comment is about the building of the school. I think it's more, and I'll stop here, it's more than just a $115 million price tag. Honestly, I think if you put another $115 million referendum out, it'll fail. So it's, it's not just about comparing prices, it's comparing what we need as a district, if we're doing it fiscally responsibly, and if it's addressing the needs. Moving sixth graders out of the middle school creates more downward pressures that I don't think we're evaluating. So I think it's much more than just to say, if we have a cheaper plan, let's rush it out and it's going to pass.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sarah Aziz, 3 Launcelot Drive. I have some concerns about our facilities issues. In 2020, the board paid around $100,000 to architects, engineers, and other professionals for a design study to come up with a cost estimate of three options to deal with our overcrowding problem. And the majority of the board appeared to support a plan to replace Applegarth School, build additions onto Barkley Brook and Brookside, and move sixth grade to the upper elementary school. However, this plan was tabled due to the pandemic and the state of the economy. When the new board took office, it paid architects, engineers, another over $100,000 for updated costs in these additions and the replacement of Applegarth School using the same architects as the Claremont School in Franklin Park. The architects said that the earliest that we can have a referendum on the table is September 2022, but to do that, we would need to hire a demographer right away. When these architects came up with a price tag of $84 million for the replacement of Applegarth School, the board appeared to lose interest in this plan and support a plan to expand the middle school. While it is possible to expand the middle school, this plan has been rejected by three different superintendents because of safety issues. Specifically, they said that building behind the school would affect safety when, when it comes to the bus lanes, it could lead to overcrowding in the hallways and create a dangerous evacuation situation in case of an emergency. But to further explore this idea of expanding the middle school, the board would probably have to pay for another design study, paying architects and engineers another, at least $50,000 to explore this plan. This means that the board will have spent over $250,000 over two years paying architects, engineers for various design studies with nothing to show for it so far. It is now late September, no demographer has been hired, and the departure of Dr. Alveig will make it nearly impossible to have a new referendum ready by September 2022. In the meantime, the administration has said that the 1936 roof on Applegarth needs to be replaced, but that roofers are so afraid to make repairs onto the roof for fear of damaging it further. Mechanics have also said that we need to replace Applegarth's 84-year-old boiler because, or it won't pass inspection next year. Applegarth is heated by oil and not natural gas, and our insurance carrier said they might not want to insure our underground storage tank next year due to, due to its age. And without insurance, the state will not let us operate the school. Furthermore, experts have said that we cannot renovate Applegarth School when it is in use, so it will have to be done in, in the summer, if it can be done at all. There's a very real chance that Applegarth School will not pass inspection next year or face catastrophe if the roof or boiler fail. The board had, has not ordered repair estimates on the Applegarth School and has not hired a demographer that we would need if we were to replace the school in a referendum. You know, the, the board really next, needs to get its act together to make important decisions to avert a catastrophe at Applegarth School, and the demographer needs to be hired right away. The overcrowding problem is our most serious problem, and we can't assess the scope of the problem without a demographer's report. Our latest figures are from 2019, and if, for 2022 referendum, we would need updated numbers. Finally, at the last BGT, at a recent BGT meeting, we heard a lengthy explanation as to why sixth grade should remain in the middle school. And when asked, Dr. Alveig and Dr. Lehman said that there was research to support both keeping sixth grade in the middle school and keep, and moving it to the upper elementary school. But we never really heard the argument for moving it to the upper elementary school. So when I researched it, I discovered that from an extracurricular perspective, it is beneficial for sixth graders to be in the middle school with seventh and eighth graders. But from an academic perspective, it's better for them to remain in the upper elementary school and that students who stay in the upper elementary school for sixth grade tend to do better on standard, standardized tests academically. So, but I'm not an expert in this, in this area. I wanted Dr. Alveig and Dr. Lehman to lay out the argument, the argument for moving the sixth grade to the upper elementary school to alleviate the overcrowding at the middle school.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Alveig, can you address the seemingly very succinct information about Applegarth School and the insurance carrier? Do we have a report?
I'm not aware of any report from an insurance carrier about Applegarth School. I know that Mr. Tag does share regularly with the board the concerns about Applegarth, but I'm not aware of any insurance issue.
Okay, and how about the oil tank? Are we at risk of the oil tank being a problem at this time? Have we had?
No, the oil tank, the, the underground storage tank was at the board office, that was several years ago. And that, at, two years ago. And at the time, we were told that it was not going to pass inspection, but we were also in the process of replacing it.
That project is complete.
That project has been completed.
And that was at a, in a different building altogether?
That was at the board office.
So there was some-
No students present in that building.
Okay.
And I think there was a third thing that should be addressed.
Sixth grade.
Well, that's a different issue. This, the roof-
The roof, same thing, I've not heard anything.
We have, all right, okay. All right, if you'd like to address the-
I, I don't have research with me to, to address that, but I can say that we successfully educated our sixth grade students when they were in the elementary school. And I remember even at that time, I was a building principal at the time with sixth grade in my building, there was a lot of concern about moving the sixth grade to the middle school. So there's arguments on both sides. The sixth grade could, can definitely be successful in the elementary school, the sixth grade can definitely be successful in the middle school. So it's up to the community what they want to do.
Okay, so I think what, what again, we might, we might need to do going forward is to have both studies and both arguments laid out together so the community can, can address it. And we have our building principals. I think we're going to try to start a new, we, we talked about with some people, and I want to tell the whole board, I think we should start having some reports done by building principals. I mean, and, and we also saw something that was a little disturbing tonight about, about some of the reports about how things are not being enforced and implemented. So I think the board might talk about having occasional meetings with building principals and getting updates from them and any problems that either need to be resolved or talk about enrollment. So, so those are things I'd like the board to consider, and we'll, we'll have to talk to each other and then the administration on how to implement that. But I think it's time that we get, you know, each building principal, that's their building, that's their responsibility, and in order to be responsible to the parents, the board needs to know how these facilities are being managed. So I think we're going to try to formulate something as a plan going forward. And apparently, there's enough issues from the public that I think that, that would give us some reason to do so. All right, anyone else, sir?
Good evening. Adam Elias, 93 Old Church Road. First question, I'd like to respectfully request, did I ask a question and that we stopped the clock for the answers? First question I'd ask is, Ms. Aziz had referred to some studies that were done or recommendations made by the insurance companies regarding the construction of new schools. I'd like to ask, is this information available to the public? Is this something that we can access on any of the Monroe Township websites?
I'm not aware of anything. I'm not aware of any insurance.
Thank you.
So to answer your question, you're saying, is there any official documentation of these things?
I'm asking, I'd like to get my hands on the same information, the same question, the same data that she has.
Do you have that information? Are you aware of any information like that?
Is the clock running? I'd like to stop the clock.
No, it's stopped, sir.
The only recollection I have of this issue is Mr. Tagg's report at the BGT committee meetings, where he may have given an update on the state of the building.
Which we are fully aware, but there's no?
And he gives like cautionary updates about the core facilities of the buildings over time.
But you don't have anything in writing as far as?
Nothing from the insurance companies.
I have nothing from the insurance company.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My next question, I believe on the agenda tonight, I heard something about the Kitty Corral receiving some funds from the state and if that funds are not exhausted, that it would be refunded to the state. Is that correct?
Yes, that is Mr. Gorski wanted to address.
Yeah, I beg your pardon. There's four categories of new entitlement that this non-public school has. And specifically, because there's no confusion with the transportation aid, which is separate. These are new and they're called non-public security aid entitlement. That's two thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars. Like you said, if it's not spent, that has to go back to the state. The next one is non-public textbook aid entitlement, nine hundred dollars. If it's not spent, it has to go back to the state. Third one is non-public nursing service aid entitlement, one thousand six eighty. Not spent, it has to go back to the state. And non-public technology aid, six hundred and thirty dollars, if not spent, has to go back to the state.
And it's only available for that particular non-public school, right?
That very specific school is entitled to this money only.
So as a follow-up to that last question, are there any other non-public schools that have requested funding in Monroe Township?
Not that we've been contacted from the Department of Education.
Okay. Now, this last weekend, I took my three-year-old to her first soccer game. I spoke to a parent who asked me what I was going to do about kindergarten. I'm sorry, I should add that my two children are at the Kitty Corral. And she asked what I was going to do when my kids get to kindergarten because Kitty Corral only does half-day school funding. I'm sorry, half-day school schedule that's funded by the township of Monroe, the district, from the funds that are received by the state. I wanted to know, are there any other towns in Middlesex County that are funding full-day kindergarten? To the best of your knowledge?
Dr. Alvik? I would assume a district like New Brunswick, but other than that, I'm not sure.
I'm aware that it may be time for another referendum, but we had a referendum for full-day kindergarten and it failed. And that was quite a few years ago, so it might be time to reconsider that.
All right. And again, as a parent of two children in Kitty Corral, without a second half-day of kindergarten option, I would hope that the board is not considering minimizing any of those funding, especially since those funds are going to just get returned back to the state. I hope we can utilize those funds for the Kitty Corral. It's a fantastic institution. It's doing a great job for my kids. Moving on, I have to ask the question that I've been asking for the last three or four months. Has Linda Greenstein or any other member of the New Jersey Legislature that represents our district been invited to this board to speak to the issue of school funding?
I guess I'll have to answer that. We have, through our committee, Chrissy Skirby's committee had discussed it, and we were going to put that out, but the answer is sadly, no, we have not done that yet.
Can I respectfully ask why?
It's really been a matter of timing, which may not be a very good excuse, but that's the reason. And we've had so many things on our plate since June that it's just been a difficult thing to do.
Understood. So I was about four years old when James Corville came out during the Clinton campaign and said, coined the phrase, "It's the economy, stupid." Right? That was how the Clintons arguably got into the White House because they put the economy as a front and center issue back in nineteen ninety-two. And I don't say this disparage to anybody on the board, but to me, when it comes to Monroe Township, it's the funding, stupid. And I'm not calling anybody here stupid, but the funding is obviously the biggest issue that we have here as a district. It's disturbing to me that we don't have anybody from the state that can come and answer as to why we don't have any funding. I believe from my most latest research, we have about a hundred and forty million dollars, give or take, state budget, I'm sorry, district budget for school funding, seven point eight million dollars in state aid, zero dollars coming in equalization funding. Jamesburg, our neighbor, gets about seven million dollars in state aid and about seven million dollars in equalization funding. And Jamesburg, if I'm not mistaken, shares the high school facilities with our students. So it's deeply disturbing to me that we don't have enough funding to comport with Monroe Township's growth. According to the wisdom of Wikipedia, from the years of two thousand ten and two thousand fourteen, Monroe Township is the third fastest-growing municipality in New Jersey after both Elizabeth and Jersey City. That makes Monroe Township effectively the fastest-growing suburb in the state of New Jersey. I'm very proud to live in the fastest-growing suburb of the state of New Jersey. It's only growing, it's only growing harder and faster. And I want to know, when are we going to get somebody from the state to come in and answer as to why Monroe Township is being neglected on the state funding level?
I guess it's me again. I actually don't have the answer to that, but I would also say, and it has always been something that I've been saying for years and years, even before I got on the board, it's not simply the funding because it is the enormous growth. And you've said it yourself many times, it's the fastest-growing community. And we are tasked with exercising our resources to put children in classrooms and get new buildings. And it's a double-edged sword because we have no control over how fast this community is growing. And when we put things out, yes, absolute state funding is critical to helping us, but that is not going to solve the problem. To me, the problem is the over, if we're talking about not really planning, the overbuilding of Monroe Township, we don't have any breathing room. And so while I agree with you of the funding and I agree with you of it, but that is not our real issue. Our real issue is the rapid development and the board cannot keep up. And quite frankly, the taxpayers can't keep up with it. I mean, the benefit goes to the developers and the cost comes to the taxpayers and the people in this community. So while I agree with you, I don't think just bringing, and that's a different issue, but I don't think just bringing those people, and we need impact fees. We need impact fees based on the municipality, in my personal opinion, and we need impact fees based on the state. But the state legislators are not inclined to consider that at this time. And it may be something we should ask, but every citizen in Monroe should be asking that of our legislators, not just having them come here. So I'm not skirting the issue. What I'm saying, it's a multifaceted issue. I think the biggest issue is the type of development that we're going through. So that would be my answer to that.
And I thank you very much for that answer because I agree with a lot of the points that you made, and I think it's distorted. I don't, I'm not, I want to make it clear, I'm not saying that the Board of Education is not fighting for more funding. I'm not implying that by any means. I know you're working with the means that you have, and you're doing a tremendous job of what you have in front of you. But what I am saying is that we need to do a better job of, you know, I, the only point I disagree with is that the legislators are not in an ability to contribute to that. Because having had conversations with many legislators over the last four months, I know that they are very much in a position to fight for their districts.
I don't say that they're not, they don't have the ability. I'm saying they don't have the willingness.
Understood. And that is why I believe that this district, the fourteenth Legislative District of New Jersey, needs a representative that is going to fight to get that kind of funding in Monroe Township. The fourteenth district needs a representative that lives and is a stakeholder in Monroe Township. The fourteenth Legislative District needs to elect a new state senator in November, and that new state senator is Adam Elias. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good luck, Adam.
Paid endorsement. If I could just?
Everybody got extra time.
No, 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 that's not that, whatever. I was just going to clarify the Jamesburg numbers. It's more like the total budget is in the fourteen million dollar range and total aid is seven million, in that range.
But this is public for Mr.?
It's not seven million and seven million.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Monica Kinnipan, three ninety-six Morning Glory Drive. I'm not here to ask questions or anything. I'm just have some suggestions.
Yes, please.
Yeah, we heard many parents asking about the children being on one-on-one person with the teachers. My younger daughter is in first grade Oak Tree now. And last year, she being at home, I had the opportunity of seeing how the teachers take classes. I was very, very thankful to the teacher who took her class. And the teacher literally has to be there for those younger kids. And she also happened to go into classroom towards the end of the year, where I saw only three or four kids come into the classroom. And I saw the jump of the teacher from, she had to literally focus on the kids who were online rather than in person because more number of kids were online in the class. So my opinion is like teachers have to, I could see that teachers have to give more concentration to the students who are actually there. And parents asked for not to go virtual and just, the kids can just see what is happening. But I feel it will not help the kid because they're not having an interaction. My suggestion for that is come a third grader, for example, they're a third grader. And if there are such number of third graders going into quarantine, I feel all the third grade teachers to be given a Zoom link, which the teachers can release to only those kids who are going into quarantine. The immediate next day or the same day mailing to the parent. And all the third grade, I also feel all the homeroom teachers would be following a common syllabus. So all the third grade kids be taught by one particular third grade in virtual teacher. That way, the kid then goes into virtual because of a quarantine problem. They are still in touch with the syllabus and they don't lose anything. And then they come back to the classroom, they are still in track with what is going on in the class. And if it is going to be one-on-one like this on Zoom, and if all the third graders are together, they are still as a classroom. And we don't have to worry about the number of kids going into quarantine. If it is one child or number of child that is going to be, because I feel there are eight or nine third grade classrooms. But I don't believe all, no, all the kids are going to go into quarantine at the same time. If that happens, you have plans. So that is one thing I wanted to say. And the second thing about the referendum. I volunteered to go home to home, teaching people, not teaching exactly, telling them what will happen if the referendum passes or does not pass and what is at stake and everything. These were the things that I was told before we went into that volunteering thing. The middle school has containers. I'm not sure how many number, but each container costs about a million per year, per container. That's what is, is it right?
No. So you're talking about the trailers?
Yeah.
Okay, the trailers, I think, there was a five hundred thousand a year?
Approximately, yeah.
For rent?
Yeah, it's per rent, yeah. So that is a rental price.
Five hundred thousand for the trailers a year?
Yes.
And then there are some costs, there were costs to put them in, and then there are costs to remove them when the time comes.
I get it, yeah.
But it's not a million, okay.
Okay, so until we are going to extend the school or come up with a plan, I believe the trailers are going to be rented and that is going to cost us anyway because the rent is not going to come back. And during the volunteering program, I got a sneak peek into the result of the referendum, wherein it said, I'm sorry to say this, but wherein it said, the part where the Mill Lake Woodlands School area is, majority of people voted no from that region. I believe it's because they are not going to gain anything from a new school replacing Applegarth.
I'm, okay, I'm sorry.
I mean, like, it's just my?
You're a little over your time, but I'm not sure that those statistics are, I don't know.
No, I received a statistical paper. I'm not sure of the numbers. I'm not?
From the Board of Education?
Not from the Board of Education.
So someone in the public?
Yeah, someone in the public, yeah. You can be sure about it, yeah.
Somebody might have made the assumption that I would be very careful about.
Yeah, sorry, yes.
You could always get the voting records, the past voting records, and actually do that yourself. I would be cautious about casting, you know, aspersions.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's what I said. I'm not sure about it. That's why I said, I'm not sure about it. And if, and also, there's a school referendum, which is?
But your time is up, Adam, I'm sorry. Thank you. But I did give you extra time.
I'm sorry, it's a little small.
No, please.
Yes.
We've let everybody, and I have given you extra time. We're finished. It's ten thirty.
Yeah, I get it. We're very late, yeah. My question?
Please, you'll have to sit down.
Sorry, I'm really sorry. My question is?
No, I'm very sorry as well. We gave everybody extra time as well.
Okay, I'll be back in the next meeting. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Good night.
Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none, we will close the public portion. Do I have an agreement with the board? All in favor?
So can you speak into the microphone, please? I haven't been able to hear like probably half the things you've been saying tonight.
Homemade? Wow.
Yeah, if I can't hear you, I'm sure the people at home aren't able to hear you.
I was going to say, you're the lucky one, Ken. Okay. We are finished with the public forum on the agenda items, and we will move towards, I believe it would be Dr. Lehman's Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I will keep it brief. I just want to thank the teachers, administration, support staff, tech team, everyone involved in getting us off to a solid start this year. There's always bumps, but we are back in person. It's been a while since everybody's been here, and it's awesome to see the energy from the students in the buildings and the staff in the buildings. As our student board members updated us, I just wanted to share that we already have some awesome news out of the high school. So we were notified that our Monroe Township High School Unified Basketball Team was selected and will be representing New Jersey this coming June at the National Special Olympics in Florida. So that's outstanding. Yep, they represent an amazing unified program. The program is a K-12 program involved in all the schools. And this is just another accolade to add on to the list of amazing things they've done. There's staff in every building involved with the program. The students are amazing. Ms. Dylan runs the, oversees the program. She does an amazing job, so thank you and congratulations. And then just a point of information for us all. So as we move forward, we're going to start implementing the Start Strong Assessment. This assessment is a result of the state of New Jersey's waiver from testing last spring and will satisfy the federal statewide assessment requirement to administer general assessments in ELA, math, and science. So the assessment is intentionally brief. It's based on a set of prioritized prior year standards. The assessments are for grades four through ten in English Language Arts, math grades four to eight, algebra one, geometry, algebra two, science grades six, nine, and twelve. The assessments are forty-five minutes to sixty minutes. We have not administered this prior. This is a new assessment. The platform for the assessment is similar to, it's the exact same platform we use for NJSLA. So it's a familiar piece for our teachers. It's a familiar environment for our students. You'll be hearing from the buildings with specific testing dates. The window is really, it's open now. We've been uploading data. Typically, when we get ready for the spring testing, which we will also be doing, it takes us several months to upload data, create class lists, make sure modifications and adaptations are appropriately input. So when we do the upload, there's minimal changes. A lot of our ten-month staff are involved in that, so we got as much as we could done over the summer once we got the testing parameters. The ten-month staff that's involved in that has been full force, getting everything squared away. So now we're ready to start rolling things out. The buildings will announce their dates. It's really end of September. It's the first few weeks in October. And like I said, it's hopefully minimal impact, forty-five minutes, sixty minutes at most. And we will still continue doing our other standardized assessments. The state made it very clear that we should not use the Start Strong Assessment to replace anything else we typically do. The point of this test administration is so they got permission to not test us in the spring. They still have to test, so they said, we're just going to do a small test in the fall. So this, combined with everything else we do, will just give us some more information on our students. And that's it.
Thank you. Do you have a question? Thank you, do you have a question?
Yeah, on the test, is that, does that count toward the graduation requirement? Is that one of the tests that is used to?
This one won't, no.
That one won't?
Yeah, so the 2022 students, they're already in play for graduation, we're already figuring out who, based on previous years' assessments, needs to be squared away with that, PSAT-wise, all the extra menu piece, this will not be. The ones coming up in the spring begin to get back in that cycle, but they did release updated graduation requirements for the 23, 24, and 25. And in the policy committee, or one of our committee meetings, I brought an update, they're gonna implement a new state assess, assessment. So in grade 11, every student will take this new state assessment, and that will be the start of their graduation requirement. And then they can, they'll always be able to follow back to those menu of PSAT, SAT options, but everyone will have to start with, starting in 2023, that statewide test.
Okay. Is that, does that start this year or starts in 2023?
2023, yeah.
Okay.
And it's an 11th grade assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? May we move on? Dr. Alvik?
Okay. I just want to echo what Dr. Lehman said and just thank the staff for the successful opening. Everyone did a great job, our custodians with making sure that our buildings were ready to be open, to our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our bus drivers, our administrative team, our secretarial staff, everyone did a great job, our nursing staff, so thank you to all of them. Moving on to our agenda this evening, I have three retirements on the agenda. Ms. Kathy Varicallo, my confidential secretary to the superintendent of schools, she has worked in our district for 21 and a half years, and she will be retiring effective December 1st. Ms. Sue Mazur, the secretary in the facilities department, after 20 and a half years working in the district, will be retiring January 1st. And Ms. Suzanne Goff, paraprofessional, she actually retired as of September 6th after working seven years in our district. So I thank them all for their service and everything that they've done for our students in the district. And with that, it's recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through AS as in Sam.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Karen, and then Mr. Tofano, second. Mr. Tofano, is that a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions or comments before we take the vote? Mr. Gorski, please call the roll.
Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Madam Board President, personnel items A through AS has passed.
Hey, Dr. Alvik?
Okay, so for board action items, I'm gonna remove from letter N, Policy 1648.11, since you didn't have the entire policy on the agenda, so it's recommended that the board approve board action items A through O, with the exception of Policy 1648.11 under letter N.
So move.
Mr. Polari, second.
Second.
Mr. Rutske raised his hand.
Thank you.
Okay, shall we, any questions, any, no? Shall we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through O, with the removal of N, 1648.11 has passed.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I just have one question. You mentioned before that there were 1,500 employees, or is that, is this the 1,192?
Okay, so with this executive order, we're required to include all full and part-time employees?
Oh, okay.
All substitute teachers, all student teachers, all, and anyone else who comes to our building on a regular basis to work in our building, such as our food facilities, our student teachers.
Okay, so that's-
So adding all of that up, it's almost 1,500 staff members.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's a lesson learned. Who knew? Okay, moving on.
Madam President?
Yes.
That takes us to the BA report. There's a couple noteworthy items I just want to highlight here. First of all, we appreciate the donation under letter H, where it states it is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education acknowledge and accept the donation of a Tama Imper-
Imperial Star.
Imperial set drum set from Vidala Tangela to be used at the Monroe Township Middle School. The drum set has an approximate value of $500. Thank you very much for that generous donation.
Thank you.
The second item on there is, you probably recognize letter G, we're resubmitting the contract for Ocellis Tech, because when it went through attorney review, one point had to be changed, the vendor asked for a deposit, which we're not allowed to do, instead it's been modified to a 50% milestone payment, which we can do. So once they complete 50% of the work, we can pay them 50%. That is the security audit of our IT infrastructure as a whole. And the dovetail on Dr. Lehman and Dr. Alvik's compliments to Ms. Kathy Dillon. Item J is the recommendation of grant acceptance for the unified program, where Ms. Dillon was instrumental in soliciting grants for the high school in an amount of $25,000, the middle school $10,000, Barclaybrook $5,000, Applegate $4,000, Woodland Elementary $3,000, Brookside $5,000, Oak Tree $4,000, and Mill Lake Elementary $5,000. It's over $60,000 of grants to support the unified program. Her enthusiasm with this program is incredible, and I want to thank her very much, the money will go to good use. So-
I think we should applaud that. Thank you very much. Good job.
Madam President, I have a question on F.
Well, let, let him finish it then.
Madam Board President, members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it's recommended that board action items A through J be approved by consent roll call. Need a first and a second?
First.
Move. Mr. Tofano, then Ms. Spearman, you had a question, Mr. Tofano?
Yeah, just on F. That GovDeals.com, do they take a percentage of the sales of these surplus items? Is that how they get fund?
Madam?
Yes, please.
Yes, they do take a small percentage and administrative fee from, I believe it's the bidder, and the district gets, you know, the high auction amount.
And have you researched other sites that may sell that stuff, or is it just?
Yes, we did our due diligence with this. In the past, we're trading in these vehicles. It got to the point where they're so cannibalized that the vendors are charging us to turn them in. So this way, we're getting a decent amount of money. I think what's committed to memory last time was like $20,000, $30,000 for buses that really had to be towed out of here, pretty much.
All right.
And I'd just like to ask the question, I think I ask it every time we see this, but I believe GovDeals is a for-profit organization, I don't believe it's a government organization. Is that correct, Mr.?
That is correct, with the important addition that we are allowed to use them as a public school district, they comply with the public contracts.
Yes, but I don't want anybody to think that it's a government entity, it's not, it's a for-profit organization, independent organization. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please, sir?
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through J has passed, that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, once again, I have the privilege of giving a board president's report, however, I think we've exhausted just about every conversation that I could possibly have this evening. Just to let you know, our auditor is working, we are moving, we are going to be moving very quickly to meet and get our super, our permanent superintendent in place, and we want as smooth a transaction, a smooth a transition as possible. And I will make a comment that I'm a little bothered by some of the comments from the public about the functioning, and I'm very happy and pleased that, and the opening went well. But enforcement of our rules and regulations really has to be adhered to, and I would like to ask the administration to press upon our board, I mean, our building staff, that we really need to have a consistent and proper enforcement of what we say is our plan. So I didn't plan to say that, so I'm sorry if that sounded a little bit garbled, but we need to have consistency as much as possible in this chaotic time with the pandemic, and I'm very concerned that some of the buildings are not functioning and enforcing our, you know, the safety protocol that we have set forth. Okay, thank you. That'll do that. Any other board of education business?
Michelle?
Yes. Karen?
Thank you, two quick items. The first is our public forum policy that we adopted, part of that was to have the timer be visible?
Yes.
So that we could see that, so I was wondering when the follow-up would be for providing such a timer during a public forum, I think that would be helpful for the board and the public.
I think what we'll do is we will, we will task the administration going forward to buying a more visible, just hasn't, haven't gotten to it, yep.
Thank you. And the second item, on Tuesday, which was yesterday, I guess, September 21st, the U.S. Secretary of Education recognized 325 schools across the country as national blue ribbon schools, nine of them were from New Jersey, and one of them is the John F. Kennedy Elementary School in Jamesburg, and I would like to extend our congratulations on that.
Yep.
I will take that, and I will, I appreciate that, I'll take that back to the Jamesburg Board and appreciate you recognizing that.
Yes, thank you.
It's a great deal for our elementary school, yeah.
Congratulations to Jamesburg Board of Education. Thank you, Karen. Rupa?
Thank you, Ms. Arminio, just two items, one being, we normally do board goals in August and September, is that gonna be done shortly? Or are you adding it?
I thought about that also, and I was gonna contact the administration and ask when that's gonna, when their recommendation is going to be. I know we, August, we stopped doing it in August because we didn't have the financial information, so as soon as we get that, we will call that. Again, we may be adding to our special meeting.
Okay, great, I just wanted to-
Put that on our agenda, yes, I thought about that in the last week.
Okay, great. And then the other item, just a few comments that I want to make regarding the process of hiring the interim and permanent superintendent. I've always believed in a strong educational system, which we have been very fortunate to have in Monroe. We are a large school district, and we owe it to our students, staff, and community to make sure we're hiring the most qualified person, whether it's in an acting interim or permanent position. As a professional in human resources for many years, certain positions always have a minimum requirement, such as an MBA for an executive position. So I just wanted to reiterate, we should have a minimum requirement of a doctorate for this position. The hiring process may take some time, so I just want to make sure that we are finding the person that will be the best fit for our district. We owe it to our students, and it is very important to our district, and parents should be demanding this of our Board of Education, so I just wanted to share those comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ms. Arminio?
Yes, Mr. Chiarella, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I would. I think that, I think our teachers took a bit of a beating tonight, both from the board and from the public, and I just want to speak on their behalf when I say that I'm very happy with all the work that they put into our reopening and everything that they do every day. These are trying circumstances in a very, very trying year and a half, and I think that they deserve, you know, our, our respect. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Nikotinsky, you were next?
Yeah, we had a motion that was tabled.
Yes, we should probably have a vote on that, shouldn't we? Okay, would you read that motion, Mr.?
Yes. Mr. Gagliardi, please, stop me if you want to make any corrections to this.
All right, sir.
It was recommended by Mr. Nikotinsky to provide a virtual interactive option for quarantined, quarantined students if home instruction has not begun within 48 hours, and continue until home instruction can begin. Does that fairly summarize what you?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And we have a motion on the table now, and it's-
Been seconded.
Yeah.
But now there could be discussions. So one of the items we heard from the public, and I don't know if you're open to amending or not, is that as opposed to what we're saying, which is if we cannot execute the home instruction option within 48 hours, that at that 48-hour mark, we would click into this virtual instruction. One of the things we've heard at the podium is the opportunity for immediate listening in access on top of what we've already put in there. So I'm asking if you would be open to amending it, to include that.
That, that's confused, I'm confused as to-
So that it would be immediately upon quarantine, you'd have the ability to listen in, which would not be interactive, it would just be the listening in portion, then at the 48-hour mark, if home instruction had not been enacted, you would have access to true virtual with interaction until home instruction is clicked in.
Madam President, if I may, I think Ken said it in the very beginning of it, and I kind of agree with him. You know, we approved a couple of teachers today, and Dr. Alvik said that there are more are going to be coming as well. Maybe if we're gonna have a meeting next week, give the board, the administration a chance to kind of fine-tune this, and come back and make sure that they can implement. I don't, you know, we don't want to pass a resolution here that they cannot implement and then come back here and start the process all over again.
Well, I think we asked Mr. Nikotinsky to consider that, and he said no. So we have a motion on the table, and it needs to be voted on.
Okay.
Michelle, in the interest of doing what's right, I think a question to Dr. Alvik would be, if we pass this motion, is that something that you can implement?
Right.
I don't have an answer to that right now, I think that'll be very difficult to implement. I would have to, I've had conversations with the administrative team, I've had conversations with the MTEA, and there will be challenges to this motion.
Okay, that's an answer. Rupa, and then we're gonna take a vote, because we've discussed this.
Sorry, I just want, want to piggyback to what Andy and Ken had said, I think we really need to give the administration some time to work with the building principals and figure out the plan, and I think it's different for elementary versus middle school to high school. Maybe they can do a listen-in option, but I think we really have to give the school district a chance to look at this and vet this out and see how they can work this out, because it is an impact on the teachers when you have to manage, you're managing two classrooms, and, you know, I think you also have to take into effect that you're gonna have parents with elementary-level schools that are gonna have to supervise if their students, if you do go into a virtual auction or listening in or whatever, they're gonna have to watch the students at home while they're working also. So I think there's a lot of different issues that may need to be looked into, and we really should give the school district the opportunity to look at it.
Well, can I just add one more thing? I would also expect, because this would be an additional workload on the teacher, remember last year when they were doing it, we gave them time on Wednesdays for planning and collaboration with their team, plus they had more time in the middle of the day when students were going home, they had more time in the middle of the day to plan for this, so they were compensated with time last year. I would fully expect the union to demand a bargain, we talked, we talked about that in personnel, what that term means, it's not a demand, it's just the legal term that they would come to me, because this would be a change in their working requirements. So I would fully expect that.
Okay. I'm a little confused, how is, is turning on a laptop with a camera on it more work? I'm confused. Can you explain how it's more work to me?
Well, it would be more planning, because they would have to make sure that they were sharing the information virtually with the student, instead of just with students that are in person in front of them. And then if you're also talking about that virtual interaction, where now you have the And then if you're also talking about that virtual interaction, where now you have the teacher having to teach the students in front of them and a student online. So I would expect that's a demand to bargain from the union, because it is an increased workload for staff.
Okay, I think we should call the vote. One more, that's it.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we're just missing, the point here is about how to educate the children continuously. And, you know, I'm apt to support this motion, because what it's saying is when we fail to do what we said we were going to do, which is give them home instruction within 48 hours, that they then have the option to be a part of their class remotely. And I think that's important. You can't just, we only saw two names on the home instruction list, so if there's a huge.
That's not true. That was the, that was the students that are receiving home instruction from last month.
Where's the list of?
The number of teachers is later on in the personnel agenda. You do not have the list of students that are on the home instruction, you get that the following month. Next month, you will have September's list. Those are two students that are specifically home instruction.
Okay, so I think we should call the vote, because if the, if the administration gets the instruction within the 48 hours, it's a moot point.
Exactly.
Unless, yes. Are we amending, are we instituting Karen's amendment?
That's not on the table.
That's not on the table.
So it's more like if we can't do what we've promised to do, that we're going to let them join their class.
Okay, so shall we call the vote?
Mr. Nikotinsky, you don't wish to revise your motion? Okay. Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Chirella?
No.
No, thank you. Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Plori?
No.
Mr. Rotsky?
No.
Ms. Segal?
No.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
And Ms. Arminio?
Yeah, I'm changing my vote to yes after public forum, yes.
With that change, motion passes.
Hopefully that will be incentives to get this taken care of.
Well, Madam President, is it possible for us to get some kind of a status if we do happen to have a meeting in a week or so, so that we can evaluate?
Yes, I'm sure the administration will be happy to give that to us. Okay, we have another public forum before we go into closed session. This is on anything, would anyone like to speak? And I'm going to strictly adhere to the four minutes on this forum. I do apologize, but we must get the rest, it's almost 11 o'clock. So I ask you, after the four minutes, please sit down. Go ahead.
All right, hi. I promise I'll try to keep it as brief as I can. Kate Ratner, Two Kings Court. So first thing, I meant, I think Ms. Bierman had mentioned it, congratulations to Jamesburg for their blue ribbon status. I think it's wonderful. I also do know that, you know, Jamesburg, I believe, and you can correct me wrong, not only has full-day kindergarten, but also full-day preschool for three-year-olds and four-year-olds. Is that, is that correct? So, half-day? Oh, for you, half-day.
Please direct your questions to the chairman.
I'm sorry, okay. So, you know, I think one of the issues we really struggle with in our town is this full-day kindergarten issue, and I know it had come up years ago. However, there's been a lot of changes in the state. I had done some research, and from what I've seen, and this obviously can change, 12 districts in the whole state now really only, no longer have full-day kindergarten, which Monroe is one of them, out of 599 districts in our state. And to me, that's really sad, because I think we have a wonderful community, we have a fairly young community, and I think the kids need to be going to kindergarten. Kindergarten, as many can tell you, is a great stepping stool to, you know, a really valuable education. And then just a couple of questions. I had heard Mr. Gorski mentioned the donation of an instrument. I was wondering if we ever reach out to anybody in the community in regards to whether or not they have any, whether it's musical instruments or sporting equipment or things they're no longer needing, because I do know a lot of people will have those that they no longer use, that they can donate to the district, get a small tax deduction, and then we have additional resources. So I was wondering if that's ever something that we've tried to do?
Madam?
I'm just going to say that we frequently say that in public, so people are aware that if they choose to. I don't think we have a formal, but Mr. Gorski can speak to that.
No, I was just going to say that it would be difficult to target those solicitations to the public. You know, where we see a larger corporation or something, we have targeted them in the past, but nothing recently.
Okay, yeah, I just thought if you could put on like the Monroe Pulse or something like that, just like a standard, if you have things you're no longer using, rather than just throwing them away, because they can go to good use to someone who needs them. My other major concern is the, what the potential current counselor-to-student ratio is, and also just the really high turnover of counselors in our district. I noticed by looking just at the last few months of the agendas, that I think it's in the last three months, we've had four counselors resign, out of 24 total counselors in our district, and, you know, that's practically approximately 20%, just in, you know, a few months. You know, especially at the high school, counselors are with these kids for four years. And I also just wanted to know, I don't know if anyone knows what the, do you know what the current counselor-to-student ratio is at the high school, approximately?
No, we don't have that information. We'll try to get that to you.
Okay, sounds great. I just, you know, part of me wonders what might be causing such a high turnover rate with our counselors. And then I also wanted to know if we do an exit survey, when, whether it's counselors, teachers, staff leaves, to know what might be causing them to leave.
The Board of Education, I think legally is not, is not privy to exit surveys, although the administration does do that, but we do not, we are not involved in exit surveys. Dr. Alvik?
No, but the Personnel Committee of the Board gets a report each month of any of the reserve, survey results we've gotten.
And perhaps you can email the Personnel Chair, who is Mr. Nikotinsky, and put that on, ask about the councils. Maybe we can have that discussion in personnel. Thank you.
Okay. Last thing real quick. I had been doing, you know, a fair amount of research, and one of the things I noticed was that there are a lot of senior option, they're actually junior and senior option programs, and I wanted to know if these are really publicized well in the district. My oldest daughter's in fifth grade, so I'm not at the high school, but it honestly seems like not only a great opportunity for the kids, but also potentially a way to deal with some of the overcrowding, at least temporarily. You know, I saw that there's Middlesex County College Programs, Community Service Programs, internships, both in and out of the district, work-study, and so I was just curious if this is something that is utilized by a lot of the students that are there.
Dr. Lehman, I think she'll answer that.
It's definitely some, I can handle, yeah, it's definitely something we engage students in conversation as they go through their course planning at the high school. As you saw in our conversations, we certainly are looking to expand and even simplify their availability to get to, say, Middlesex College, and engage in those classes, and almost give them an incentive to explore something, and a lot of students still do internships or things like that. But it's definitely, it could be utilized more, it's a goal that we always, we strive to increase access to that. You know, and it's an interesting approach in terms of addressing overcrowding. It's clearly an afternoon piece, you know, so an early-out kind of piece, maybe lightens a load in the building. We certainly leverage that on our scheduling and things as well.
Right, yeah. My thought was like if you have part of that in the morning, whether it's the community college classes, and then the afternoon is more of the internships, then you don't have as many students necessarily in the building. Certainly not going to account for 3,000 students, but, you know, it certainly makes a little bit of a difference. I hope, I just had 10 more seconds, there was one thing I forgot, it's really simple. We're having a pretty large discussion amongst parents in my grades about the, I guess, discrepancy in homework regulations. Some teachers are giving almost no homework, and some teachers are giving over an hour of homework each day. I know that probably comes down to school administration, but I want to know if there's anything being done to oversee that all students are getting equal homework.
Okay. Thank you.
There was a homework committee several years ago where there are some guidance to staff about homework, but it's not a minute-for-minute thing. And the other thing you have to remember too is students are different. So, you know, even two students in the same class may be taking a different time on homework also. So the recommendation would be for any parent who has any concerns about that would be to reach out to the building administration.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
Chirok Patel, 25 Jagalski Road.
I'm sorry?
Chirok Patel, 25 Jagalski Road.
Yes.
Actually, I have a question. We had a lot of debate, open forum, about making sure the kids get back in the class quickly, even if they're quarantined or get some lessons. What happens if the kids fully vaccinated? And if they travel out of state? CDC guideline does not require any kind of quarantine. If you like, I can show you right on my phone. So what is the Board's guideline for that one?
Dr. Alvik is coming.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Okay, the CDC guideline does not address vaccinated students who have been out of state.
Correction, does, it does not require any quarantine.
Correct. Any, any student or staff who's quarant, who is vaccinated is not required to quarantine after travel, correct.
So all they have to do is just present the card that they're vaccinated?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Domestic and international?
I'm pretty sure it's both.
CDC does not require international or domestic.
So, yeah, you would just let the school nurse know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Our policy, I don't feel clear on that. It is clear for domestic, but not for international.
I can't.
Okay, wait a minute, it's public forum. There you go.
Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. So I'll ask the question again. Why will this Board not consider making a motion tonight to follow the DOH's guidelines rather than the CDC? Pause my time, please.
Well, if you're asking me directly, since I'm the Board President, okay. I would have to see both guidelines, but I also would have to defer to Dr. Alvik and our attorney, and our attorney, and just make sure that we would do that. And it's up to the Board. I mean, it's a full Board that can make that decision.
Has the Board or the administration done any research to see if it would be a better option, considering most other districts around us are utilizing the DOH's guidelines?
We haven't, we haven't done research as a full Board, no, I haven't certainly. And I have relied on our administration to regulate the school facilities. I'm not an expert on this, so we have relied on, now, as you can.
So failure to do your research and have kids quarantine and, you know, have a bigger issue when, after, you know, November comes and holidays come, is an acceptable excuse to not look at what other, you know, districts are embracing, they're not putting, you know, extensive burdens on the students in regards to quarantining? Maybe something just to take back and think of after this meeting, because I don't certainly see anything coming out of it tonight, but that's the first piece. Second piece, there was a comment tonight, or a previous speaker asking about, comments about, you know, insurance, you know, our insurers talking about the roof at Applegarth and, you know, a number of things over there. And I appreciate them bringing that up, because there's been a lot of fear-mongering in our community, particularly on Facebook. And I think parents that send their kids to Applegarth now, some may be afraid that the roof is about to collapse on their children, because we've been told maybe it only has three months left, or, you know, the insurer, you know, we can't even get a roofer to walk on the roof now because it's so unsafe. So I'd like to hear now, is Applegarth School safe for students to be in, and is there any imminent threat that the roof is going to collapse? Please pause my time.
I will have Mr. Gorski answer that, but I had requested that Mr. Teig join the meeting this evening and for, and I'm not sure what the reasons are why he was not able to attend, but I think it would be best to answer that, but in his stead, I'll ask Mr. Gorski just to address that.
Certainly. Nobody's going to put their administrative certificate at risk by having a child enter any school with a safety issue. So Applegarth is safe with the disclaimer that the entire building and its systems, all of them, the plumbing, the heating, the roof, the windows, the boiler, are well beyond their expected life. And those systems are subject to failure, and if it fails, as it was mentioned earlier, we do have a fail-safe with the municipality to temporarily use the senior center, but it's certainly not a long-term option. So the advice that Mr. Teig has given this Board repeatedly is that Applegarth needs immediate replacement.
Is the school safe for students to be in it?
Yes.
Have roof, have we had roofers on the roof to look at the roof?
Yes.
And what was the report from the roofers in regards to the roof?
I can't comment on that, because we've had numerous roofer pairs. It seems like every big snow, we have a roofer up on the roof at Applegarth.
But the roof is safe enough for a roofer to look at it?
It's safe with that disclaimer I made before.
Got it. The same disclaimer when you buy a house, you can't ask a seller for seller's concession when the furnace looks old, because it's still working. It may go another 30 years, it may go 30 seconds. You know, these are just assumptions based on what we think the life of units are. The last thing I'll speak about, there was someone that came to the podium here talking about the qualifications for a superintendent. And I would be very disappointed in this Board, and I think a lot of people would be in this town, if you just looked at the qualifications of education. I'm not discounting what's, you know, someone that goes through education and gets a doctorate versus someone who doesn't, but experience, and I think in life, outside of even, you know, a school district, you know, there's very, very little compensation given to someone that has a lot of experience maybe in their field and how they've progressed in the field. And again, I don't know the candidates that you'll be looking at tonight, I hope they are good. I certainly believe we need to get someone in very quickly, even if it's interim, to oversee the challenges that we face right now, because it clearly, you know, we clearly can't handle the plans that we've put in place. So to stand here and say that it has to be a doc, actually, I take it back, I think it was one of your Board members, not someone at the podium, that said, you know, a successful superintendent must have a doctorate. I think that's baloney. I mean, there's nothing that shows that. You can go down to Rumsen Fairhaven, you can go to other districts around, these superintendents don't all have doctorates, and they're good in their jobs. So to discount someone because they don't have that level of education is a political hack. So I'll leave it there, but I do hope that you do find good people that have applied, and we can get someone in to not only right the ship, but we have a very short period of time before Dr. Alvik leaves, and we don't want to be left with nothing. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Sarah Aziz, 3 Long Slade Drive. First, I want to congratulate the people of Jamesburg for the award earned by John F. Kennedy Elementary School. I am an alumni of John F. Kennedy Elementary School, and it's great to see the changes that have happened over the past 30 years. So congratulations to Jamesburg. I was surprised by the comment that you hadn't heard of the insurance issue, so I checked my notes and my recordings, and I have a recording of the October 2020 BG&amp;T meeting, and I actually transcribed what Facilities Director, Mr. Teig, actually said at that meeting. And this is what he said, and I quote. "Applegarth School is the biggest challenge. We are in a dire state at that building in terms of the roof, boiler, HVAC, electrical infrastructure, and the underground storage tank. We have an underground storage tank at Applegarth School because Applegarth is heated through oil, not natural gas. The insurance carrier sent us notification that they were going to cease insuring that tank because of the age that it has reached. That is a situation we will approach at Applegarth very soon, where the insurers are not going to want to insure that underground storage tank because of its age, and maintaining insurance on the underground storage is a mandatory requirement of the NJDEP. Without the insurance in place, you are not allowed to operate. You're looking at a big price tag for handling the infrastructure of Applegarth School. The Board has a difficult decision determining where they want to head with Applegarth. The clock has been ticking. The infrastructure of that building is in dire shape. I am very, very concerned about the viability of the boiler holding up. Every year, we lose a lot of sleep on whether or not the boiler would last longer. We have two boilers at Applegarth, in the 1936 building and the 1983 building. Part of the safety process, the licensing process, the insurance process, they are regulated by the state. A state inspector comes in and eventually issues an approval for the boilers to be used. The mechanics have said point-blank, you need to get these replaced. You may get another season out of these. Once these go, you are in a bad situation. Boilers are a major issue there. The roof is a major issue. The roof needs to be taken care of. The piping that runs throughout the building, we have pipes that just corrode and deteriorate. This is a big undertaking to address that school. Now, of course, the school has passed inspection. If it hadn't passed inspection, there would not be students there, we would not be allowed to operate. But just because it passed inspection now doesn't mean that it will in the future. And my question is, this quote that I'm transcribing, that I transcribed, that is from October 2020, and since then, has the underground storage tank been replaced at Applegarth? Because it's possible that this was true then, but not true now. And has the boiler been addressed? I don't think the roof has been addressed. So, I mean, I can send you the recording, you can hear it for yourself, but I just want some clarification about the underground storage tank at Applegarth School.
I think the question earlier was the roof and the boiler.
No, it was also the underground storage tank.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that.
The specific question I asked, I answered for Mr. Fabiano was regarding, you know, did I hear, did I receive anything on the insurance company regarding the underground tank, I believe? And the answer to that is. And the answer to that is no. If Mr. Teig commented on that...
In October, he commented on it, so that, this could be an old issue.
Yeah, it's possible. I think every cautionary advisement that Mr. Teig made in that quotation should be taken seriously. The building is old, and it's subject to failure at any one of those systems that were mentioned. The boiler and the, that's certainly the older boiler, the oil boiler is very, you can't get parts for it anymore, and it does keep us up at night in the winter. And the underground storage tank with oil is, any underground storage tank is a problem, and that's why we replaced it.
So that has not been replaced? It's still the same?
To my knowledge, it has not been replaced, and Applegarth has not had any capital improvements other than cosmetic when we closed the school for asbestos remediation.
Okay. Mrs. Aziz, was that a Buildings and Grounds, or was that a...
It was a Buildings and Grounds Transportation Meeting, October 2020. I can send you the recording, if you would like.
We'll find it, thank you.
Okay.
That's good. Anything else?
No.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I would just like a voice to close the public portion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are next going into closed session. Closed session resolution reads as such. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subject, interview for interim position. Following closed session, following the closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists, before we pass that.
As part of that resolution, you want to incorporate the temporary board secretary?
Yes. Okay, so we will also need a temporary board secretary for the closed session resolution. Generally, it's Mr. Nikotinsky. Shall we... So moved. So moved, second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we need a roll call, do we?
Who's second?
Ms. Bierman? No, Ms. Belko.
Belko's second?
No.
No, I'm sorry. Belko made the motion. Chris is second.
And I say aye.
So we will probably be back in an hour. Just as a way of explanation, while Mr. Plori is joining us, I'd like the public to know that we spent an inordinate amount of time. We interviewed two candidates for acting superintendent, acting interim. We're going to qualify that designation as acting or interim when we decide. So, if anyone would like to make a motion, I entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Ms. Bierman?
I would like to propose the following motion. Be it resolved that Mrs. Sherry Chanley serve as our acting superintendent of schools from the date of Dr. Alvin's departure until a permanent superintendent is named. Compensation will be determined and negotiated by the board attorney and board president. This is subject to preparation of an appropriate contract by board council, and the approval of same by the executive county superintendent of schools is required by law.
So move.
So, Mr. Nikotinsky, that was, Ms. Bierman made a motion.
Got it.
Mr. Tefano? Is there any comment before we take a vote? Mr. Rutske?
I guess my only comment would be, it was unfortunate that we were pressed for time and couldn't thoroughly go through the list of candidates and interview anybody from the outside. With that said, we had two good interviews, and I am prepared to vote tonight.
But we will be proactive in searching for a permanent.
Well, that is the determination. We will begin very quickly to look for permanent. We have approximately 30 applicants for permanent superintendent, and we will move forward very quickly for the sake of the community and the district. Anyone else care to make? No? Okay. Mr. Nikotinsky, you'll call the vote.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Chirrell?
Yes.
I'm a yes. And Ms. Plori?
No.
Ms. Segal?
No.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Tefano?
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Okay.
Me?
Ms. Madam President?
I will vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's hope we can move forward very quickly. Congratulations, Ms. Chanley. We hope that you will bring us to a transitional period with the honor and dignity that is the people of Monroe deserve. And I will now open it to the public specifically for this action. So the only discussion for public, if anyone would like to speak, would be on this action. Seeing none? Okay, we will close the public forum. All in agreement?
Aye.
And the next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be in October 20th, 2021.